Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular City Council meeting for the City of Los Alamos, Monday, April 15th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Graham-Mahia.
Here.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here. So please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing afterwards. Mayor Protem Graham-Mahia will lead us in the pledge and Councilmember Gross will lead us in the invocation.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bow your heads, please. As we assemble tonight to consider the business of our city, we ask for your blessings. For those that were affected by the very tragic explosions in Boston today, please watch over those that were injured and the families of those who lost their life. Please watch over and guide our City Council this evening that we may make decisions to benefit our entire community. Please also be with our citizens, especially those who are sick or those who are experiencing a crisis in their lives, and help them. We ask for all of this in your name. Amen.
Okay. So first up, we're going to have some presentations. I'd like to have the council join us up front and we're going to recognize the WestCom representatives. Well, I want to thank you for being here and have a long proclamation here and I don't want to read the whole thing, but it is National Telecommunicators Week and recognizing WestCom, who is this joint agency that we have with Seal Beach and Cypress. And let me just kind of read a couple of things here. Whereas the national telecommunicators are the first and critical contact for our communities have with police, fire, and emergency medical services and are the single vital link for our law enforcement and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with critical information, and ensuring their safety. And now, I warn Kusamoto, Mayor of the City of Los Alamos, with concurrence of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th to the 21st as National Telecommunicators Week in the City of Los Alamos, and we are here honoring the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our communities and citizens safe. So with big applause, thank you. So if I can, if you can just mention your names.
Kathy Moen.
Marie Pope.
Michael Berry.
Steve Jipmars.
And Steve is interim, just interim manager and he just started today. So again, with that, did you want to say anything? Okay. All right, so with that, I'll present this and thank you very much, WestCom.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, okay, there we go. At least I got one loud response. Well, thank you very much. It's an absolute honor for me to be here in front of everybody tonight and working with the City Council to recognize our 27 Race on the Base sponsors. It was a tremendous, tremendous year this year. Out of the 30, this was the 32nd annual, took place on February the 23rd. All the dates run together now. It's hard to believe that it's been a couple of months. And this year was our most successful event that we've ever had in the 32 years. Definitely deserves a round of applause. Thanks to all of our sponsors. It was definitely a collective effort. There's no way that we would be able to continue to offer as much as we do during the Race on the Base and provide the event the way that it is without every single business and organization's partnership in the event. We had 4,151 participants this year, up almost 500 from last year. And last year, we were excited because we had broken the record from the year prior. So we're very, very excited and thank you again for all of that. And today, we're just going to recognize all the sponsors. Not all of them could be with us, but those that are here with us today, I would like to present you with a small token of appreciation. It's a certificate from the City Council as a thank you for your partnership. I'd like to start with our title sponsor. They've been a partner of ours for a number of years now and we're excited that they'll be back again next year. And from Southland Credit Union, Matt Herrick. Another longtime partner of ours and here this evening from Friday Night Lights is Mark Another great partner of ours for a number of years now from Republic Services is Sam Our food sponsor for the last couple of years, from Johnny Reb's Southern Barbecue is Cheryl Carter, Jeff Hollum, Eric McKenzie, and Mo Ramon. From TriZone, located here in Los Alamos, is Gayla Greeley and Cheryl Perkins. From the News Enterprise, longtime partner of ours, Ted Apadaka, Sue Onyon, and Lori They are also representing the Sun News, so we thank you for the partnership of both papers. From the Orange County Breeze, Guy Krigliou and Shelley Henderson. From Sir Speedy, Sean McLean. From Trend Offset Printing, Marie Castaneda and Charlotte Troleo. From Pacific Coachways, Tom Giddens, Michael Giddens, and Connie Giddens. From UPS, we've got Beverly Berry. From Care Ambulance, Ashley Harburger and Destiny Doughty. From the Rotary Club of Los Alamos and Seal Beach, come on in, Patricia and Ray Oskanazi. And from Kelly Paper, Anthony Tristan. From Website Design Solutions, Amy Shakula and Bo Bunyani. Hopefully I got that right. Forgive me if I butchered your name. From Trident University International, Cynthia Escartan and Scott Emmonson. And from Feds Get Fit, we've got Rainelle Crawford. So as you can tell, it takes a tremendous amount of partners to make our event successful. So thank you all very, very much. We truly appreciate it. Yes, don't leave. Come on in, come on in. Got to take a picture and the photo app.
I think one of our councilmembers needs bunny ears.
Yeah, you want me to do that?
Oh, yeah, that one too.
Don't go anywhere. Are you good? Okay. Why don't you guys slide over this way? We don't want you to go sit down yet because we're not quite done, but slide over this way because we need to make room for the men and women from the Joint Forces Training Base with whom this event definitely could not happen considering it happens on the Joint Forces Training Base. So...
It would be more outside, though.
So we're going to move them in so hopefully the wall can stand on its own without them holding it up. So from the Joint Forces Training Base, Major Arnie Corilio. Major Aaron Salacy. Sergeant First Class Blanca Potes. Sergeant First Class Jessica Anigo. And Sergeant Lance Fuller. And again, thank you all very, very much for your contribution and the number of men and women of the Joint Forces Training Base, again, with whom this event would not be possible. So hold the pose, get in tight, and then I will turn it back over to the mayor for another presentation.
Okay, again, thanks to Cory and our staff for putting this on and for all the sponsors that helped make it happen and for the men and women of the armed forces. Thank you very much. So if the sponsors can sit down, you folks stay up here, please. If I can have the council come out in front, please. I'm going to need some help, I think, with this. So on behalf of the City of Los Alamos, the City Council, the Parks and Rec Commission and Department here, we want to present this to the base for the morale and welfare, the morale, welfare, and recreation fund.
But before you sit down, if we might add a couple more folks, if the Johnny Reb's folks could come on back up here, please. And the military folks don't quite know about this, but Johnny Reb's we partnered with this year and they established, they have a charity campaign called Shell Out for Charity that they have at all of their restaurants. And between their three restaurants, they were able to raise another $1,100 that they are donating to MWR this year as well.
That was fun. Again, thanks to the sponsors and the men and women of the armed forces for being here. Our next item is oral communications and this is a point in time where any person's wishing to address the council on any matter that's in the City Council's jurisdiction would be, can come forward to speak. We do ask for blue cards, but you don't necessarily have to do that, but I have one blue card and I think another speaker here. So hold on a minute, let's let the crowd settle. So anybody wishing to speak, we do have a Don Seward. Oh, Beth, go ahead, Beth. You're there, go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Beth Piper and I live on Kearsarch Avenue and I'm here just to remind you that we will not forget about the City of Cypress's proposed truck depot, the fact that it is going to greatly impact Cattella Avenue. The other day, when I tried to come to City Hall, traffic going east to west was backed up past Bloomfield and it was like 3:30 in the afternoon and it was almost as bad going the other direction. The air pollution, the noise, the light pollution that's going to affect our neighborhoods, the cut through traffic, the loss of the natural wetlands that are there. We, I know that you have voted against this and we do expect you to support your citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so Don Seward?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, I am Don Seward and I am a resident of Cypress. I am opposed to the creation of the Cypress Truck Terminal on Cattella Avenue and I am asking you to help stop it. Your help, you would help by just doing nothing. Do not facilitate the building of this truck terminal on Cattella Avenue. My understanding is that Cypress owns only the westbound curbside lane of traffic on Cattella and Los Alamos owns the other three lanes plus the parkway divider. I also understand that there is an agreement between Los Alamos and Cypress concerning sharing of the cost of the maintenance of the street. Consider this, for each 18-wheeler arriving at the terminal, there will be three to four delivery vans leaving carrying the same tonnage out as was brought in. That means double the tonnage on the road for one cycle. And then consider the empty weight of the trucks leaving and the empty weight of the vans arriving. There will be two, there will be two more cycles each day. Now what is the maximum that Cypress will pay you for the maintenance of this street? Now wait, there's more. There is a subject of the left turn lane for eastbound traffic at the proposed truck terminal and only three traffic lights along this segment of Cattella. Do not add any left turn lanes for this eastbound traffic. And if there is an agreement stating that three traffic lights are the maximum for this area of Cattella, keep that agreement. Do not give in to Cypress with another left turn lane and a traffic light that is on your property. In summary, if you folks do nothing, you can kill the Cypress Truck Terminal project. If you do give in to Cypress, you might not be reelected, but who am I to say? Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Lois Waddle.
I'd just like to put this out for, it was for you to see it. There are additional pictures. You have this letter and I'm going to read this letter, but these are some additional pictures.
Good evening, council and mayor and city staff. I'm delivering tonight to you your copies of a letter that was given to the Cypress City Council, April 6th, and that was entered into the EIR report. And I'm asking that it be entered into your record tonight. And I'd like to read this letter to you. Dear Mr. Hawkins, mayor and city council members, development of the site would result in a tragic loss for the citizens of Cypress. It is a wetlands and refugee habitat made by natural springs and rain for migratory birds, Canadian geese, gulls and flocks from the ocean during winter storms, mallards and flocks when the lake has water and when they can dredge the sandy loam soil to aid thy digestion. Also, the great blue heron is occasionally seen. Red-tailed hawks nest in trees, currently two nesting pair behind the hotel. Sparrows everywhere, ravens and blackbirds continuously feed on the ground. The citizens of Cypress would lose half a Cypress recreational and wildlife park. They would lose the ability to walk and ride bikes around the perimeter while viewing the wildlife on the ground and circling overhead. They would not be able to go in the tunnel, the best fun, to reach the other side on Ceritos, to reach the big three lakes and the hilly trails. See over for pictures on the back of your letter. There is a picture of the tunnel and one of the big three lakes and the beautiful hilly trails over there. Living across the street on Tyconderoga, I see all the birds when I walk. When the other side was open, the Ceritos side, my dog chased a fox that was chasing a cottontail. It is truly a wildlife paradise. And I'm asking that, you know, hopefully Cypress is going to embrace this idea and I'm asking at this particular point that Los Alamos cooperate in view of the fact that it looks like we're losing the track. I had said to the City Council, I didn't include this as a Cypress-Los Alamos recreational and wildlife park because I didn't think you'd want anybody else in there involved. This is a potentially beautiful, beautiful site for a huge sports facility, for pools, for biking, walking, it has everything. And I would hope that if it does come to fruitation, that Los Alamos can be included, but I don't think they'd want you. But at least I would hope that you would throw your support behind this and perhaps save, save these little areas in there that can be saved because most of the track is level now. And when that goes, all they would have is the infield track to be part, a continuous part of the three lakes and you would have the four lakes. Anyway, thank you very much and I am entering this as a matter of record into the EIR report, the environmental impact report to the loss for the citizens of Cypress as well as, we'd be using the park, Los Alamos. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Gorman, LA Youth Baseball.
Hi, and I'm with Shelley Hasselbrink. And my name's Brian Gorman and I am the president of LAYB, which is Los Alamos Youth Baseball. It's been in the community for 52 years now and we have close to 800 players in our league at this time. A lot of you are probably familiar with the Little League World Series that you have seen on television. ESPN has carried it the last, I think, four years. Pony baseball is what we play under. Little League is a separate corporation, Pony's a separate corporation. Pony baseball is real baseball. You can steal, some of the differences, the bases are longer, et cetera. Has awarded Los Alamos with the World Series for the 12-year-olds for 2013. So, thank you. It's been in Monterey for the last 20 years. We had some events at our facility last year, my first year as president. We were fortunate enough to have the CEO for Pony Baseball fly to our facility where him and I had met and hung out for a few days and now we have the World Series. So not only a big deal for us because one of our teams is grandfathered into the series, so our team automatically, 12-year-old team, goes to the World Series. Big deal for a lot of people. ESPN is a direct competitor with Fox News or Fox Sports. Fox Sports wants to cover this along with MLB Network, so it's going to be a national thing. We have teams coming from not only around the United States, but we have teams coming from the Caribbean, from Mexico, and also from Asia. And supposedly the Asia teams are really good ballplayers. So I guess we're just here and Shelley has been with me since I've been at the field and her family's been involved with LAYB for a long time. She's very knowledgeable about the city and about the facility. And I brought her along because she has some great ideas. I'm going to let her address you guys for a minute and then you can ask me any questions. I just want to, I wanted to come here and formally announce it because I want you guys to be involved in this. I want you to be involved in it and I want the military to be involved in it and I want to make it the big deal that it is. So it's ours to make big or it's ours to do mediocre and I want to, I want to make it a big thing, so.
We would just actually like to present you guys with all-star hats. We welcome you to come down. It's August 1st through the 4th. It's the 12-year-old teams. We are part of the Joint Force Training Base. We have a great partnership with them, have been on their land for many, many years and we invite everybody to come down. It's going to be real exciting for this whole community.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'll take one of those.
Yeah. And you know, and as far as the mayor goes and the other council members, we're going to do some opening pitches. I'm going to have the commander from the base do it. I'd like you guys to be there, you know, that's going to be covered, like I said, not only local media, it's going to be covered nationally and I want you guys to be involved. I want the city to be involved.
I won't pitch because I don't want to make them look bad.
Well, we can move you real close.
Okay. Well, I can hang.
Okay, well, just so you know, we're going to run a challenger game also that's for the disadvantaged children that are not able to have special needs. I'm running a game there for that league. We're going to pair up an all-star from each team with a particular challenger player and they're going to shadow them through the, through the event. So briefly, just, you know, any military person that has a child in the area that are active, they play for free. Any kid at our facility that's parents have come, any sort of hardship in, I have not turned away one, one kid yet from playing baseball at our league. So we're a big part of this community and I wanted to come out here and let you guys know what's going on. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a hat for you too, chief.
Okay, no other blue cards? Any other speakers would like to come forward?
Alice Jemsa, resident of the City of Los Alamos, and I would just like to speak to an item that is part of your agenda. It's under the consent calendar and it's Item D regarding the purchase of television equipment for our Channel 3. The commission has gone over various recommendations for different pieces of equipment that are needed for our station. And we've taken quite a bit of time going over these and there really are two major proposals. The one you're dealing with tonight is the one that I feel is the most advantageous for our city at this time. And I'm going to just read a paragraph from our meeting of March where we approved this. And Doug Wood, you know who he is, without him, you wouldn't be on television tonight because he does manage our station and is very knowledgeable of our needs. Well, Doug stated that over the past year, his conversation with former... Well, Doug stated that over the past year, his conversation with former city manager Avery included the necessity to purchase critical equipment for the studio. So there's no doubt that we need these things. And he agreed that the proposal that is being presented tonight is a good start. There's another proposal that would run $90,000. And he said that was only recently presented. And his recommendation is that you go along with the one that includes the $36,000. And some of the things that are being recommended on this are actually also recommended on the $90,000 one. But he said the $90,000 proposal may be overly ambitious, and he urged caution, because we just have a certain amount of money to put in, and we want to be sure that the equipment that we are buying is really appropriate for the studio. And we're making some plans to do additional things with the studio, have some training classes for some of our youngsters, and for the older people who want to possibly produce shows for our city. And it would all be city-related. So I hope you'll take a good look at this and go along with what the majority of the commissioners felt was appropriate at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Art DeBolt, I'm a resident of Los Alameda's. I'm not here to talk about the racetrack, but I am here to talk about Item 9A. I have to, another appointment, so I have to leave, so I'll address that right now. I can sum up everything I'm going to say in two words regarding 9A. This is your choice of whether to go to, go from action minutes, which you currently have, to summary minutes. Or the other one. So I can sum these up in two words: transparency and historical context. There is not one of you up there that did not utter the words transparency when you were running for office. Unfortunately, in politics, talk is cheap, and the proof of your belief in transparency is manifested by your actions. Transparency does not end when you file the state-mandated campaign disclosures or your personal information that is public record. Transparency also includes not only your vote on the various items, but also what you say about the item before you, before you, and your contribution and reasoning to the debate concerning those items. The public is entitled to see a summary of what was said, who said it, and why it was said. That is transparency. Historical context. The importance of this, of this transparency is not only to the current residents of the city, but for the future residents and generations who may want to look back and read or view the context and the why of the decisions made by you five council members sitting up here in 2013. As a planning commissioner, we have used minutes of meetings from 20 years ago to see the reasoning behind a certain land decision, land use decision. To actually read why a past commission decided what they did becomes extremely helpful when dealing with the same issue 20 years later. The historical context is your legacy. Either, either it will show you to be the public servants that you are, or are not, in which case you may not want to have any context to your votes. And I'll just digress just for a second, because I was looking for minutes that could illustrate summary minutes. And I have them, and I'm, and these are actually from the City of Cypress, who does use summary minutes. And this will relate to the issue that everybody's been talking about. The last city council meeting, the city attorney for the City of Cypress went to great lengths, and it's on their website, and you can view it, to, to be absolutely clear that there has been no money spent by the City of Cypress on the prior Measure L that was approved, that this was solely a ballot measure driven by the landowner of the track. So here is a little bit of summary minutes that probably they wish didn't have a context. Mayor Bailey asked about the language of the initiative. By the way, this is in January of 2012. The city attorney replied that the initiative was prepared by the proponents and is distributed as part of the signature gathering process. He indicated he prepared the ballot summary with input from the proponent. I guess they must work, I don't know, is he working for free? Who's he working for? Council, and then also the comment about, what about senior citizen facility? That was never mentioned. In the same meeting in January, Councilmember Seymour commented that the signature gatherers were pushing the senior care facility and not the other options. Those are summary minutes. Good for us, probably, hopefully, probably not good for them. I am in favor of summary minutes, summary minutes, because it does provide both transparency and historical context. For over 50 years, the minutes of this city have been summary. Only in the last two years have they been action minutes. This lack of transparency must stop. It is not about cost, you already have a city clerk whose job it is to produce minutes. Summary or action, it is part of the job. At the end of this meeting, my remarks are going to be recorded in the current action minute format, which means that these profound words of wisdom, which I've, will be reduced to the phrase, Art DeBolt spoke in favor of summary minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Sorry.
Good evening, council members, Mayor, Mayor Protem. As the first person spoke, the first thing that they said was, "Thank you very much for your vote of support, and that you're going to be with us." Words are great. I thank you as well. I'm sure everybody in Carrier Row, New Dutch Haven, Dutch Haven, all the apartment row, and everybody down there, thank you. It's great to know you're on our side, because we elected you, and we hoped you would be. We would like a little action as well. I realize that there's closed sessions going on, and that this is with the attorney and everything else, but that doesn't mean you can't do something very general. In a way, letting Cypress know that we're watching. Art DeBolt doesn't have to go out and find minutes back from January. We can actually ask Cypress, can you be kind enough to please take everything associated with the LART since Cottonwood, and package it up in a nice package for us in PDF form? Include all the Measure L signatures, and all the Measure L stuff? And can you ship it over to us so we can post it on our website, so that our residents, people who are interested in our city can go through this and see exactly what did happen? You can help make it easier for us. And in you making this request, you can also say, "Please, wire at it. Don't destroy anything associated to the LART, please, because this is really important to us. We really wanna know what happened. Our residents want to know what happened. We aren't part of your city, we haven't been attending your meetings. Give us an opportunity to study this." If the city were to make this open records request to Cypress, that would show that beyond the words, you guys are taking action. It is a simple open records request made from our city to their city. And then when you get it, put it up on the website. You've got a very interested, active, and involved community right now. We will be more than happy to go through that and show you everything we find. And we'll even most likely publish it on a website that's been set up to deal with the LART issues that are facing us, both on Measure L and the current development, as well as on Measure A, which is just around the corner, both literally and figuratively. And that website is ocforus.com. You're gonna be seeing a lot of it from both Cypress residents and from Los Alamat residents. Because this is where we are going to be posting everything we find to share with the community and with the both city councils. I'd like to thank you very much for your time. I would also like to take a moment to reiterate, Art found what he found because of the type of minutes we used to keep. Let's go back to those minutes. It creates transparency. It's good for the community. Thank you very much. Have an outstanding evening.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor and City Council. I, I'm here for a couple reasons tonight. I want to say I oppose the, the pro lodges project in the City of Cypress, as the other people who spoke this evening. And this website is a work in progress. There's another website called savescyprus.com that will link in with this website when it's all done. So if you're not finding what you want on this website as yet, you can go to savescyprus.com. I also wanted to speak on the minute item tonight. I'm opposed to the action minutes. I have been ever since the action minutes became action here in the City of Los Alameda's. I, I don't understand why the city has been, for 50 years, used, you know, summary minutes, and it worked just fine, and then all of a sudden, there was, something happened, and then we had to go to action minutes. You know, I'm not sure why that was. I do believe in transparency, and I think it's, it is good to know and be able to have the history to go back and see who said what, when, and what they meant. You know, sometimes in minutes, people make mistake, mistakes, whether they're on a city council or here at the dais. You know, things change, and people can change their mind, and everybody understands that. But I think it's important to have that history, and, and I think that if staff needs more help to do that, we should do that. I think it's very important, because it is the official record. You know, if anything ever happens, you go to court, that is the official record. You know, we, we do keep the videos of the meeting, you know, the tapings of the meetings for several years, but I just think it's a good idea to go to summary minutes. And I hope that all of the people up here on the council that, that I supported would also vote in favor of the summary minutes, because it is to be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close oral communications. Next item up on the agenda is the register of major expenses, and I'd like to get a motion to approve.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? Any, okay, with that roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Graham Mahia?
Yes.
Mayor Kusamo.
Aye. Next item is the consent calendar, and they can be acted on in one motion, or if anyone wants to pull anything.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to pull Item A and D. And if no one has any additional items to pull, I'll make a motion to move the remainder.
B and C.
B and C. Okay, any other items?
I'll move the balance.
Okay, so we have, so we have E through K to be approved. Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes, 5-0. Okay, can we go to Item A, the approval of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is an item that I've been bringing up for the past couple of years. When I was on the city council early on, the minutes were summary minutes, and they were much more descriptive and, and gave better explanation of what actually transpired in the meeting. I've been on the council long enough to know that in the past, when we've asked for decisions that were made in the past, there's no record, and we don't have, as one of the speakers says, the institutional knowledge to base our decisions and not recreate the wheel if something's already been decided a certain way. So what I've done is I've asked for the agenda item regarding the meeting minutes and the change from action to summary. So I wanted to pull this item for one last time, hoping that the council will support me and, and say that I'm in opposition to the action minutes, and hope very seriously that we go back to the summary minutes for transparency, and also for historical knowledge that was said earlier. And that's it.
Okay, move approval. We have a motion to approve the minutes as they are.
Second. Yeah, I got one last question.
Oh, sorry.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Wendy, city clerk, the meeting minutes that you have here in Item, let me get it over here real fast, 8A, what type of meeting minute format is, are these in?
So for Item 8A, all of the minutes except for 8A2 are action minutes. 8A2 is a combination of action and summary minutes. It's very limited summary.
Okay, so right now, these aren't full-on action minutes only, they're, they're summary too?
The regular meeting is summary too. Yes.
And so Jerry, you're opposed to the one that's summary right now, too?
Actually, I'm opposed to the amount of content that's involved in, in these minutes. And, and I'll give you an example. If you go to, let's see, let me find a good example. Regular meeting, March 18th, if you go to page 8 of 13, you'll see many bullet points that talk about specific things that were talked about, but it doesn't go into any detail. It doesn't determine which council member either supported or opposed. And I think moving forward, those are things that the residents have a right to know, because you elect us, you have us up here to be your voice and, and to carry forward the agendas that you have, not our own. And I think in this format, there's so little information that if you came and read these, you would have no idea what the full content of that item was that was discussed, nor would you know who was speaking with regards to support or opposition. So to me, I, I think that's really, that's really the point. When we came on, both Troy and I, we came on at the same time, and the minutes were much more detailed. They gave descriptions of what people said, whether or not they opposed it, specific content that was important. And I think one thing, and I, I wasn't trying to get into this agenda item early, but one thing that was also mentioned is that the meeting minutes are, are the legal record. And in this staff report, you'll see where it says, "These minutes can be used in litigation against the city." But I look at it from the other side. It can also be used to protect the city, to let it, let everyone know that we did what we should be doing. And if it ever comes to a lawsuit, we can show that, and, and it could protect us. So I think, I, I think that's really what I'm looking for, is more detail, and not just simply these bullet points, not differentiating which council members are speaking and saying what. I, I think this is as minimalistic as I've seen it, and I'm uncomfortable with it. So, not looking to give Wendy any more work, and I've talked to her about it, so it's nothing, you know, personal. I just think that in the best interest of the city, we need to have a lot more detail in these, and especially for institutional knowledge.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm trying to prepare for the next item that's coming up. So, you know, if we're going towards summary minutes, like even your example, if you look on page 7, discussion items, the 33-acre Cattella industrial development, same thing Mr. DeBolt talked about earlier, but the Cypress version?
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's two pages of comments. So if we follow an action format, which we're supposed to be by policy, you wouldn't have a page and a half. So I, I, you know, I, if we switch, and I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but if I just use the one we're approving tonight as an example, I'm, I'm unsure what we're gonna go to, because it feels like we're already there, the summary. And, and if not, then does summary even go further than this, Wendy?
Yes, the summary that Councilmember Mahia, or Mayor Protem Graham Mahia is referring to would include a lot more detail.
Okay. I'll save the rest of my comments for when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion by Councilmember Gross, and the second was by Councilmember Murphy. So with that, all those in favor of approving the minutes as they're written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So three to two passes. Okay, the next item, we'll just take them in order, if that's okay with you, Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem. So the warrants, Councilmember Murphy, you pulled the warrants, Item B.
I have a question. We spent about $13,000 on a stump grinder. Is it possible that we could do a, an analysis of these rentals versus purchase to see what we need? Is it?
What page is that on?
I'm sorry, it's, uh, page one of the warrants in Item 8B. It's this third item down, two stump grinder rentals.
Okay, thank you.
Are we talking about the, the $1,300 expense, 1338?
Yes. Well, except for the 160, the, the two stump grinder rentals. Can, can we put something in place to look at stuff we are renting and see what we possibly, if there's any savings to be had by purchasing?
Yeah, I can report back on that.
Okay. Thank you. And on page four, brochure postage for the rec- Okay. Thank you. And on page four, brochure postage for the recreation. Are we doing all we can with the post office to keep our costs down? We're doing all the sorting, anything else we can do?
Yeah, we follow their bulk mail policies, so it's still much cheaper to do it that route. And the price of postage just went up again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
On the minutes from, I'm sorry, the warrants from 325 on page four, this would be, I guess, for police patrol from RHF Incorporated. Not a lot of money, but I'm interested in what we're doing. We're recertifying four or five ultralights. What are those?
Those are used for traffic. Those are the radar units and they require recertification. And we have five units.
So those are on five different cars?
Five different handheld units.
Oh. Thank you.
Any other questions? So is there a motion?
Make a motion to move it.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Protem Mahia and a second by Councilmember Edgar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So passes, five oh. Next item, it's the item C, again, taking them in order. Councilmember Murphy, you pulled the Caffer. Did you want to report?
I'm just, I'm concerned. I mean, I know the situation, why we're so late, but I had spoken to Josh and I just kind of wanted to explain to everybody, we are going to get a schedule of what financial reporting we can expect on a regular basis. And I believe that'll be in the next, in the weekly?
Yeah, I'll provide that in the next weekly.
So we've kind of been sitting on our hands while we were shorthanded. And so we have a whole plethora of items we'd like to ask you about. Thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion to move it.
Have a motion.
Second.
Mayor Protem Mahia, second by Councilmember Edgar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, passes, five oh. Okay, the next one is the purchase of equipment for LATV. Mayor Protem Graham Mahia, you pulled this. Did you want a staff report or?
No, actually, I'd like to table it and give the ad hoc committee an option to meet with the stakeholders, get their arms around what's actually being looked at to be purchased because there are conflicting requests from two different people who deal with the station. And so that would be my request is to have it tabled until a later date.
Okay. Councilmember Gross?
Yeah, I'm on that ad hoc committee and the committee did meet. Would clarify that their internal tech committee that LATV has worked on this. This has been a work in progress for almost six months. They met and reached a consensus and then submitted their report to the commission. The commission took the matter up and approved the purchase of the items with a recommendation that goes to the council and for the purchase. And that was approved on a five, I'm sorry, a four to one vote. And I recognize that there are differences of opinion that exist within those that are involved with LATV. However, my personal feeling at this particular point is I don't see what waiting longer is going to do. There was, some of the items that were available at a discount had been purchased prior to April 1st. I don't want to micromanage the commission. I think the commission had the opportunity to vet it out. That's why we hire them. If we're going to go back to doing that with the commission, then I would question why we have the commission. So I would be opposed to withholding it. Let's just move forward. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. We question decisions made by different commissions at any given time, so I don't think that that would be any different with this. I think what I'm saying is having been on that ad hoc committee for a couple of years and dealing with this, I've seen some of the unfortunate tactics that are used. I think the commission's doing a great job, but when you talk about the technical group, there are five people on the technical group. Two people supported what's being submitted tonight and three were in opposition. If we have a technical group because of their expertise with technology and we're going to overrule what they say, I could argue the same thing that you just said. Why then are we going to have a technical group? We need them for their expertise. They are saying they do not support this being brought forward. And so I'm saying, let's take a second stab at this. And I will tell you, we have in the past purchased things that were recommended by the same person who's recommending these tonight. And now those cameras are obsolete, just as an example. And I will tell you that that was not what we were told when the purchase was being asked for and then we granted the fact that they could have the money to do those, make those purchases. So I think that being the fact that there are limited funds in this, they are not replenishable because we do not get the same kind of money we used to, I think that we need to move slowly. I don't think the argument, well, we've missed out on a sale and so now it's going to cost us more. I know that dealing with that group, that there are constantly different packages that you can purchase and there are sales going on consistently. So I would just ask that we table this, let the ad hoc committee meet with the stakeholders of the technical group, get a report from them because they are the experts. And then if we can find some kind of compromise, well, then we can come back at the next meeting and address it then. I don't think the delay of a month or if we have a special meeting, we can get on that meeting would be a big, would be a big concern.
Thank you. Any other, I have something, any other comments?
Yeah.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, we formed the LATV commission when we really lost control of the TV station. We had a lot, high turnover. The council thought for a year or two that we could manage it early on, Jerry. Then we finally formed the commission. We said, hey, we want to empower them to go do what they need to do. All I have on this item is that what was available in the staff report, which in the staff report and all the meeting minutes that I've seen from the LATV commission, it appears that this thing has been working its way through for the last four or five months that I can tell. The tech committee or the technical group assessment, I wasn't clear on the meeting minutes, how the vote went, because I hear kind of two perspectives, one saying they did an improvement, one saying four one. So I met with the city manager before the meeting tonight, just to get a perspective from his view. And, you know, from their view, they said that they were supportive of the recommendation that was there, that it was four one. There was one commission member. I also listened to Alice Jimsa, who came up. She's on the LATV commission and got her perspective. So I, you know, we really have tried really hard to get the commissions to be able to move forward and to be empowered. I'm a little bit unclear, you know, at this point, what, if the tech commission said it's fine, then why were we waiting?
They didn't. They voted three-two not to put this one forward. The commission voted four-one to support it.
Okay. Greg, can I get a clarification? Maybe I didn't ask the right question today. The commission versus the technical committee?
Right. The tech committee met and we tried with Josh and myself and we went out and did a field visit. And we discussed and it was, it was in a compromised form. And we didn't detect any opposition at that time. And we, matter of fact, here's an email from Doug Wood. I approve of this list. I do believe it represents what was agreed at the tech meetings. Thank you. And he goes on to ask if there's any other questions. Has it wound its way through the process with the, talking about an ad hoc committee meeting? The mayor suggested that we try to go back to the tech committee one more time. We weren't going to really get them together, so we sent out emails to them and we got input and it came back divided. We had this, another from Larry. Josh, was there like any vote or anything?
The tech committee, they never took a vote and it's not a voting body. It's more of an open ended discussion.
Right. But this was, this was our, when we had the meeting out there, that we thought this, they all seemed to have worked on this as a compromise. Then it went to the commission and the commission vetted it out. There was quite a discussion, correct?
Yeah, the commission also heard both versions, the larger purchase and the smaller purchase. And that was presented there by other members of the tech committee.
It was a four-one vote to approve what you have before you tonight.
Okay. So three bodies involved, the commission, the city staff, and the city council. So city staff's recommendation is to go with this, because you guys are much more into the detail than we are. The commission appears to be 100% or four-one or five-one with it?
Four-one.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I would, again, I just don't know what the compelling reason would be to wait, but I'll listen and see what else is said. Thank you.
Richard, anything?
I did get an email today that said the tech committee voted three to two against this proposal.
Right, I got that same.
All right, okay. Any else? I still want to go, Dean, before you go. So I'm the other half of the ad hoc subcommittee and I think I'm going to ask if I may, with the council's permission, step away from that. I did miss the meeting with Josh and Dean because of another meeting that conflicted. So I know that Mayor Protem Graham Mahia has a lot of knowledge of this and I would nominate her in my place, number one on the ad hoc. So if that's okay with the council, I'd like to do that. So the ad hoc will be Dean and Jerry. The other one on the, I think, with all respect to the commission, the TV commission, I think at this point, I would be supportive of pulling this and let's wait one more month. If we've already missed the sale, I think we've missed it. I think, you know, we're talking, I think, spending 40, roughly $40,000 of a $44,000 pot of money. And that is a big investment. And I know we've talked far longer, about $450 a year, than we have about $40,000. So I think one more month is not going to hurt the TV commission. And I think it'll get that chance to vet this out. And as I understand it, I didn't receive any emails about three-two vote. I did hear from a couple of members of the tech committee. And it seems to me there's a question of the timing of this, how to sequence the purchasing, where it makes it sense, where you can phase in the equipment and not do it all in one fell swoop. So I think with that, I'd be, you know, I would like to see us just take one step back, one more month. I don't think it's going to mess up the studio. I mean, we've done, how many, how many months have gone by without the equipment? So that would be where I would kind of go with this one. But with that said, we'll put this to a vote. And you had one more question, one more comment?
You know, I guess the concern that I have, and I, you know, if you want to wait a month, two months, three months, four months, I don't know that it makes a lot of difference because there is dissension among that group. The biggest concern that I have is, is that we have a commission. And the proposal from the tech group was presented to the commission. And the commission debated it, just like we do. And then they made their decision and it was a vote with one dissension. And the person that dissented was not on the tech committee. And so to me, it had been vetted well before that commission. Now, if the commission felt the same way as the dissension among the tech committee, then I would think the commission would have acted differently. But we have a commission that's been appointed. They've done the work. And so for us not to go along with what the commission has recommended back to us through staff, to me, is just saying to the commission, we really don't need you.
Mayor, if I may, you know, Dean, I understand what you're saying because they give their time, they're volunteers. We greatly appreciate their help. But I'll take you back to your first term on the council, when the traffic commission, I believe it was, said that in your neighborhood, it was not appropriate, based on MUTCD rules, to put stop signs in your neighborhood. Yet it came to the council and the council overturned the commission's decision and put those stop signs in your neighborhood. So I don't think this is uncustomary. It's not meant to do anything other than take a step back, protect the remaining money that we have, make wise decisions because in the past, the purchases that were made have not, have not given us the bang for our buck that we were told they were going to. So really, honestly, all I'm trying to do is protect that reserve, get a second round at this, and then, and then make a really informed decision so that we, we don't find ourselves in the same position where we've got outdated equipment in two years and then they're coming back saying they need more. It's going to, it's going to exhaust that reserve very, very quickly.
I have a question. So on the, one thing that you said, because, Dean, you met with the, as the ad hoc. So who was the dissenting vote on the planning commission, I mean, the TV commission?
Steve Clayton.
And does he not sit on the tech commission, the tech committee?
I don't believe so, but you'd need to ask.
I think he does.
Either the chairman or the other commissioners in the audience.
City manager, Steve Clayton, is he on the tech committee?
John Underwood's here. I don't know if he could, is John Underwood, is he on the tech committee, Steve Clayton?
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify that. So that was a question I had. So you had another question?
I was just going to respond back and then I'll let it, let it go at this particular point. The issue regarding stop signs in my neighborhood really doesn't relate to this in terms of a discussion because I'm not fighting for myself. There's 138,000, I believe, that's in the reserve monies, which the commission doesn't have the authority to spend. My understanding was there were two proposals submitted to the commission. One proposal was for the $39,000. The other proposal was for over $90,000. And so it's, again, to me, it's been vetted out by that commission. I can't support lying it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Troy?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've got one more comment.
Okay.
So, you know, being very pragmatic, this is a math problem. I mean, we either vote on it now and see if we got three votes or we vote in a month from now. Because the commission already, mathematically, no one's going to be able to overturn that, even, you know, other folks that are outside the tech committee. If it's on a three-two, it's probably coming back. So it's going to come back to us. So why don't we just put them out of their misery and just take a vote on it?
Sure. So call the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
You've got a motion to table.
Yes.
Didn't hear a second.
We don't have a second. Thank you, city attorney. So is there a motion to second?
I'll second.
Okay. I mean, sorry, a second of the motion. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Graham Mahia, second by Councilmember Murphy to table the item. Let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so tabling, it passes three to two. Thank you very much for the thoughtful discussion. We'll see where we are next month on this. With that, that concludes the consent calendar item. And the next item is 9A.
Mayor, if I could real quick, you know, we did a similar thing with the planning commission and sent it back and asked them to work it out with the, with the bank and the 7-Eleven. And I'd like to make the same request to this commission and the tech committee, if they could come to a consensus about how best to move forward. That's really what we're looking for. We're not looking to delay their purchase in any way.
Okay.
Just like to see some.
I think the message is understood. I think we have the chairman of the TV commission, you understand the request, the desire. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Okay, with that, the next item is 9A. It's the council policy on the meeting minute format. And with that, I guess if we can have a brief staff report, city manager? Oh, thank you. City clerk?
Thank you, counsel. So on August 2nd, 2010, the council adopted resolution 2010-16, which established the policy for action minutes. Part of the policy was that the recorded DVDs of the meetings would be kept permanently. The DVDs are retained permanently in the city clerk's vault. To date, the clerk's office hasn't fully implemented action minutes. This was due to the departure of the city clerk at that time. When I was asked to fill in as the city clerk, management at the time instructed me to leave the minutes in their current format. Shortly after being appointed city clerk, Mayor Protem Graham Mahia asked for the discussion of the minute format to come back to city council. Minutes in their current form today are a combination of summary and action minutes. They're very limited summary. They include limited detail of the discussion and action taken on the item. The discussion denied before council is if they would like to keep the current format of action minutes or if they would like to go to summary minutes. Should council vote to retain action minutes, the policy would be implemented immediately. If council decides to go in a different direction, staff requests council discuss the specifics of what they would like to include in the minutes. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. First, do we have any questions of city clerk on this matter? Seeing none, okay.
Well, yeah, I guess I do. City clerk, so law was passed in Los Alamitos, called an ordinance, two years ago, a year and a half ago. Why hasn't the policy been adopted?
I briefly touched on that, of which, since I've taken over, management at the time asked me to leave the minutes as they were until a permanent city clerk was found. And then shortly after I was appointed, it was already asked to be re-agendized.
So if we approve the police stop patrolling somewhere in the city, it's going to take two years till staff decides that they're going to want to actually do what we say based on a majority vote?
Unfortunately, I wasn't there at this time, but whatever council decides tonight will be implemented.
So right now, we have an illegal, basically illegal, our lack of compliance with our current ordinance. So now this thing's being brought up to say, look, were we really serious the last time? It, this makes no sense to me. And, you know, just, you know, you're saying you're new, but I mean, this item actually, you know, we've went through one clerk all clerk already. And when, before you came on board, the clerk came and said, "Council, I'm backlogged, and you guys are getting in fights over meeting minutes, and I've got five to six meeting minutes, four months old, that I can't get out." So now, we're sitting here looking at this really from an efficiency of time. You know, are we making a big deal out of the meeting minutes? We aren't able to pass an ordinance and actually make it happen. You know, even today, you've been in the job for how long?
Officially a city clerk, or filling in?
Well, both. You've been in the job for like, three or four months?
Officially since January, and then filling in for a little, almost a year and a half.
So a year and a half. Why haven't you felt, I mean, other than somebody a year and a half ago said, "I don't want you to, to, to go forward," now you're in the job, why, why didn't you just say, "Hey, look, this is what the law is. I gotta follow the law"? Because that's what we would expect our citizens to do.
Correct. And I have tried. I've been pushing, limiting the minutes more and more to action minutes. And there's been actually change of management twice, and both changes asked me to leave them.
Is it something technically you can't do? Is that why you're waiting? I mean, I don't understand why, if you woke up tomorrow and thought, "I'm just going to follow the law," are you, do you not know how to do it?
No, technically, yes, it can be done.
So why are we waiting again? I just, I gotta get to that point, so I understand why, after two years, we don't have an ordinance that we passed two years ago, actually in place, and we're not following it. And you've been in the job for a year and a half. I just, I don't understand unless technically, you don't know how to do the meeting minutes that need to be done. Why are we waiting?
I can implement as soon as possible.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else, council member Edgar?
I'll wait till we open it up.
Thank you. And next, council member Murphy?
How long would it take, let's just say, for summary, since it takes longer, how long would it take for you to be able to get a draft of the minutes out, so we don't go a month before we see them again?
In the format that council, or Mayor Protem Gramahia would like, we can get a draft out in maybe within the two weeks.
Okay. And action minutes, how long would that take to get a?
Action minutes can be done the next morning.
Okay. Currently on our table, even under minute format, we put summary minutes, even though we are approved for action minutes.
Correct.
Okay. I'll save the rest for the comments. Thank you.
Dean?
I think we need to do a clarification a little bit here, too, because I understand what you're saying, councilman Edgar. If this was an ordinance that was put in place, and I'm not disputing that it was, then we should be following that ordinance. And what I hear from the city clerk is that management has told her not to do it. And, hear me out a second. Management in this particular case is the city council.
There you go.
Because she's an employee of the city council. And while she has staff, and she reports for functional aspects to the city manager, we've had transition that's occurred there. And in reality, and the city attorney can probably clarify this, if someone tells her not to do the job, and she follows that direction, then I think she fails to understand who she's employed by. And, and so, I understand that, and I'd like to, to be on record clarity-wise, that we employ the city manager, and we employ the city clerk, and we contract with the city attorney. Everything else in this city, employment-wise, operational-wise, falls under the city manager to implement policy and to make things work. And if it's not working, then I would, I would hope, from this point moving forward, that if there's that type of a conflict, one of our employees would report back to us directly and say, "I'm being told to do something that violates where we stand." That being said, back when we did the mid-year budget, in fact, when, when council member Murphy and myself were interviewed, we brought up this issue because it's very time-consuming every single meeting to go through explaining the difference between minutes and what one wants versus what another wants versus direction that's taken. We've asked, and there is a copy that starts on page five of six of this report, about technology that's available that I think creates the transparency that people in the public have talked about, that meets the obligation that councilor Mayor Protem Mahia is seeking, and at the same time, becomes more beneficial. And that is a company called Granicus, I believe is the name of it. There are a number of cities that use that, including the county of Orange. And it offers a broader type of clarity, I think, for the citizens, and solves this problem the same way. And clarify me if I'm wrong, as I try to summarize that. But essentially, it is a software program where they record the meeting. And the meeting is live-streamed on the internet, I believe.
That's, our recording would still be done the same way. It would be done through LTV, and then I would upload the video to the Granicus website and do the linking between the agenda item and the video.
So it gives, it gives a different format from the standpoint of the public to be able to see. More importantly, if, if people went to the city of La Palma's website, as an example, the minutes are available on there, but they're available by topic, which means that if I only wanted to hear about item nine A on tonight's agenda, and who said what, I click on that, and I not only have the minutes there available to me, but I also have the audio recording of everything that was said. And it's kept in perpetuity forever. And so, it accomplishes what we're looking for. They transcribe the minutes and present them to the city clerk.
The minutes are not transcribed.
Right, that's what it says.
Oh, they're not?
No.
Okay, so it's just a recording, then, similar to what we're doing right now?
Correct. The only difference would be that the agenda item is linked, so it's timestamped, so it can take them directly to the item that they're looking for. But they do not transcribe the minutes.
Okay, but they would be essentially verbatim minutes?
The minutes would still be done by the clerk's office.
Would be verbatim minutes using this process?
This process doesn't do anything for the minutes. It doesn't transcribe the minutes, it doesn't do verbatim minutes. It only links the agenda to the.
Recording.
Recording.
Okay, then I'm.
Actually, excuse me one second. Could, it could do more, but for what we're proposing, we're only proposing that we use a transparency suite.
Correct.
So that's all that that suite does?
Yes.
Is put a different type of advanced recording, or better type, okay. And we didn't really, we didn't look into what the full service would be?
Even as a full service, Granicus doesn't transcribe minutes. They do have a minutes suite that just puts it in the minute format. So it would put in, I would click as we're going through, and it would put in the action and what you guys did. It still doesn't put in any comment of what was said.
Okay, thank you.
And that's an additional four hundred dollars a month.
Anything else, council member Gross?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
I think I said quite a bit in the beginning.
All right, so I'll go. So, city clerk, if, you know, on the line of questioning that council member Edgar had brought up, when the prior full-time hired city clerk, Adri Jimenez, when she left, we appointed then-city manager Jeff Stewart as the city clerk.
Correct.
And you followed direction from him.
Correct.
And then, when Jeff Stewart left, we appointed city manager Angie Avery as the interim clerk as well.
Correct.
And then we hired Kathy Mendoza as the assistant interim city clerk. And you followed direction from them the entire time.
Correct.
And then we made the hire offer this year.
Correct.
And I think that, I think I heard you say that you had basically complied with the ordinance by moving us to more of the action minutes. So you complied with the spirit of the ordinance. And so that's where we're at, and we have this question here before us to, and I don't think at any one time there was any, I don't know there's any direction from the council, at least I didn't sense any from us, to you to say, "Do it this way, do it that way." I think you knew what the preferences were, based on past discussions, but, and I don't think that any of us had brought this up, saying it wasn't compliant with the action minute format.
Correct.
Okay, so, so there was no feedback from your direct bosses up here that it was or wasn't compliant?
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure of that. So I think, with that said, I think we've got something here that, if I understand it, two weeks versus a day, a day will still be a draft of action minutes, but basically it says, "Mr. or Ms. Smith spoke in favor or in opposition to an item."
Correct.
Basically, that's it. And, and then one would have to rely on the video recording that, that would then fill in all the blanks as to really what Mr. Smith or Ms. Smith had, and we have an issue. Now, where does one get the video recording?
And they make a request through the city clerk's office, and they're available immediately.
Okay, so it's nowhere online, except perhaps through other members of the public that might post it online. So there's no, there's no direct linkage, as some other municipalities, where there's a click to get to the agenda, a click to get to the published minutes, and then a click to get to the video record. That's part of our records.
We do have a link to the video, but the city doesn't load those DVDs.
Okay, so, so that may or may not be, quote, the official, okay. So with that, and I think I understand that the actual workload to do this, it's not two weeks, forty hours a week, eighty hours to get the draft minutes? Is that?
That's correct.
So roughly in the two weeks' time, how many hours, labor hours, would you spend doing this, on, on average?
On average, I'd say for a five-hour meeting, it'd take about six to eight hours to do.
Okay, so under double, so if we have a five-hour meeting, it's under double, so ten hours. And in two weeks, that's, you know, eighty hours, that's one-eighth of your time. Okay, so it's not, it's not a tremendous workload?
No.
Okay, all right. That was all I have. So back to us, is there a motion?
Are you gonna open it to them?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Members of the public would like to comment on this, please? Thanks.
Jay Mivler. I've had the pleasure of going back to the old minutes a number of times, when Madam Jemso was on city council, and she had said something, and I wanted to be able to go back and research it. I was able to do that, because I could see what she said, and I could go back, I could take a look at the minutes, I could take a look at the context, and then I could come back before the council, and I was able to say, "Back here, you said this, in this context. Now you're saying this in this context. Which is it?" We just saw an example tonight where we were able to do this with the city of Cypress's minutes. They aren't verbatim, but we know the context, we know who said what in the discussion. This is a matter of transparency. I find it interesting that councilman Edgar felt the need to beat up on a new employee who was falling direction for over a year, that it isn't about her, it's Jeff Stewart, it's Angie Avery, it's a number of other people. She's been doing the work, and she's been doing something between the two-minute types. And it really isn't satisfying you, who just wants a bunch of bullet points as what we did, and those of us in the community who actually use the minutes to try to understand and use historical references to them. And we want something that says, "Well, this was the context, and this is who said what." So, Mr. Edgar, I realize that lack of context and getting them out is your desire. You made that clear two years ago, when you had a majority, and you pushed these minutes through, when a whole bunch of people said we didn't want it. Mayor Protem Mahia has, for two years, been saying this isn't sufficient. The people in the community who use these things have been saying it's not sufficient. You're supposed to represent us. We're the ones who use it. We're saying it's not sufficient. Represent us. Provide us with the tools we need to be able to do our research and have an institutional memory. I ask that you please go back to the minutes that existed before Mr. Edgar and the majority decided that we didn't need to know what was going on and who said what. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So Steve?
Hi, Jody Schloss, again, on this item. I know I already spoke on it, but some new information came to light right now. Although I, I didn't hear you discuss, you were talking about the Orange County Board of Supervisors. I do like the way they present on their channel. I like the, you can watch the meeting, you can fast-forward to a certain item. I'm not sure, because you didn't discuss it all the way, the cost to the city, and also the, you said something about they don't transcribe the minutes, or they don't do the minutes. But it is kind of minutes, as you're watching it, and you can print it out. There's several different ways when you go back on it. There's an item that you saw, you can go back and review it, and you could print that out from your home. So I would like to hear more discussion. I don't know if this needs to be done tonight, if, I know it's been brought forward and tabled, and brought forward and tabled, but if you need more information about the Orange County Board of Supervisors, their website, and how they do it, and cost, I would like to see that first. And if it's applicable, then yes, it might be better. If not, then summary minutes. I don't like the action minutes, and I realize it's been partial action and partial summary. And I think, I'm kind of confused as to who makes that judgment call, to do, "Well, let's just talk about a little bit of this on this item, and let's get more thorough," and either, please do it thorough on all of the items. That's what I would like to see. Especially pertaining to what you say as the council, because it's the official record. Nobody seems to care what we say. You don't have to, you know, if somebody gets up here and speaks for five minutes, nobody cares what we say. Yes, opposed or supporting, that's fine, for the public. But if people want to see what you said, they can watch the meeting. But I think it's very, would be very interesting to the public to know what, you know, if they don't watch the meetings all the time, they could, with a quick check of the minutes, they could see, "I voted for this person, is this person still representing me?" You know, we had a talk before we, you know, we talked about, you know, voting or supporting you, and we want to know, "Are you still going in that direction, or are you going in another direction?" And a quick look at the minutes would say, you could see if you support or oppose, but maybe you explained why you supported or opposed, and that could save you a vote for later. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me?
Was there a procedural issue?
Well, council member Edgar asked me if someone can speak twice on the same subject matter. And I, I think you and I have had this discussion previously.
Right.
I know that, that your, your policy is to allow people to speak during oral communications and/or when an item comes up. And I think what I've said is that.
One to the other.
That I understand that you let them speak at either time, but they really ought to speak only once on the subject matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, city attorney.
Well, just for the record, historically, we've never, we've never stopped people from commenting twice. So I don't know why we do that now.
Why follow the law?
Well, when you had the majority, we didn't follow the law. So I guess.
All right, let's go. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel Javier Mahia. First of all, Wendy, I would like to apologize to you, as on behalf of the residents of Los Alamos. The line of questioning, to me, seems absolutely inappropriate to be done in public. That sounds like a personnel issue, something that should be done in the privacy of closed session. Mr. Edgar, when you are asked questions of such nature, you have the privilege of not having to answer to the public. You get to sit in silence and do that. And I just think that that line of questioning is inappropriate for the public. That's, it just seems out of line. With regard to the minutes, I, I support having the detailed minutes. The minutes that they currently use, as I said, is just not sufficient. You can read through the minutes, and time after time after time, there have been things where the minutes have had to go be referenced, and there's not enough there to make any logical assumption of what actually transpired. That's not what they're for. The official record is the official record. Whether you have a video available, whether you have it on the newspaper, whether you have it somewhere else, whether it's stashed in your back pocket, the official record is the official record. And the residents of Los Alamos have spoken on this time and time again. And you all were put there by the residents of Los Alamos. I mean, that just seems simple. And as far as following the letter of the law, like I said, there was, you know, a recent council majority who just recently, within the last couple of years, was found in violation of a city ordinance when they selected the trash contract. I mean, let's call this what it is, you know? This is just not okay. Mr. Edgar, that is not okay. You were found in the wrong on that, and, you know, it's not okay for you to go this route. And that's just, you know, it's just disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Still have one more.
Hi, good evening, city council. No, I've not spoken on this issue of transparency. But as an ex-realtor that sold real estate here in Los Alamos for sixteen real estate here in Los Alamos for sixteen years, you're entering into a specific period that could possibly result in great loss to yourselves, to the city, et cetera, with this situation. And, uh, I would think that transparency, you would just be bending over backwards trying to get this situation straightened out, so there are enough help in the city clerk's office to have everything explicitly documented from now on. I mean, you are entering a period of great liability here. This is not a time to quibble about transparency to what extent. You want full, complete transparency of everything. For God's sakes, get some extra help for this poor girl. And I think if you have to engage in that kind of a discussion with her this evening, Mr. Edgar, it certainly should be obvious that you're discussing that she doesn't have enough help. So that seems to me to be a, a problem that you need to resolve. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Mayor, City Council, uh, for the record, Wendy did get a, a new employee starting today, so-
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Any other comments? Public, okay. With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back here. So, um, looking for a motion before we go back into discussion. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Pardon me?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to, uh, get a firm proposal from Granicus. Uh, a question was asked earlier about cost. The proposal that we have, which doesn't meet my expectations at this particular point, is a forty-six-hundred-dollar one-time investment and a monthly, uh, maintenance fee of, of six hundred. But I don't think that's the program that we want to look at, but I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, staff take a look at, uh, and get a correct proposal from Granicus that gives us the capability of doing the minutes, uh, and doing them where they're online and have access to the, uh, residents and, uh, similar to those that are done by both the county of Orange and the city of, uh, La Palma and perhaps others. And I'm not sure exactly how that functions, but I think the format of the, of the summary-type minutes can be done, um, and if it requires them to trans, transcribe them, I think that should be in the proposal, either on a line item so that we can decide in that particular process. But I think this, I think we need to make the minutes more visible to the public and in a timely fashion, so that'll be my motion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we move forward with summary minutes, and then, uh, uh, as a caveat, also look into the recommendation that Dean is making, and, because we, we brought this up, we've hashed it out. I don't want to waste our time or the public's time going through this again and again and again. I'd, I'd like to ask the council to support the, the residents with the summary minutes, and then if we need to readdress them, because the Granicus, uh, technology turns out to be something that will free up time for the city clerk, then we can do that at the time. I just don't want to rehash this again. I don't like for us to have to fight or be at odds with each other. That's, we're trying very hard to work together, and so I'd just like to make a second, uh, make a motion, a substitute motion, to, uh, go to summary minutes and do the investigative work that was recommended by, uh, Councilmember Gross.
Okay, hang on a second. So, City Attorney?
Don't love to go Robert's Rules of Order on you, but technically, the first motion didn't get a second yet, and a substitute motion comes in if the first motion gets a second. So his, his motion is still on the floor to see if it gets a second, and then if it does, uh, Mayor Protem Mahia's substitute motion would then see if it gets a second.
Would be more characterized as a, uh, an amendment to the motion, though. It feels like it's in, on top of the-
Well, when I said amendment last time, you corrected me and said substitute, so I was just trying to go with your-
I don't know which it really is, actually.
We're gonna get ahead of ourselves.
I think it's, I, I think it, they're different enough that it's really a different motion, I think.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Edgar. Is there a second?
Not by Councilmember Gross.
I mean Gross, I'm sorry. Sorry, Troy. Councilmember Gross has a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second, okay? And then we'll have a substitute motion by Mayor Protem Gran Mahia.
And now you see if the substitute motion gets a second.
Okay. Is there a second for the substitute motion? I will second the substitute motion, so now we vote to-
You vote on the substitute motion now.
Okay, so-
Are we gonna open up for discussion?
Okay, so we'll open up for discussion on the substitute motion to go immediately to summary minutes and also look at the, uh, Granicus product as a means to, I think, further document and, uh, post our minutes on their website. So open up for discussion. You want to go first?
Sure.
Troy?
Yeah, you know what? Just so we don't rewrite history to some of you folks that came up and spoke at the podium, um, the meeting minutes were a tremendous problem for the city clerk two years ago. She had come to council members and asked for help because she was having tremendous hard time, because she was mediating fights up here on the meeting minutes not being thorough enough. Um, she, when she came up, we said, "Well, what, what would help you?" As she is our direct boss, or we are her direct boss, she's a direct report to us, "How can we help?" And at that point, the city clerk said, "It would be helpful if we changed the meeting minutes." So just a little correction historically, um, you know, I did, I, I personally didn't wake up and go, "Man, I really want to get into meeting minutes, because I think it's super exciting and I think it's something I really want to make a, a big focus on." This was an item brought to me by a city clerk previously. Even up to this point, I have expressed concerns for the last two years and at least a year and a half with, with you. I, and so what you're seeing here isn't a discussion of just, "This is the first time that I'm addressing this." We have been talking about this. Um, I, I don't understand why we have a mix of meeting minutes. It just makes no sense to me. So, you know, just, it, it is really dysfunctional. I think that, um, you know, people came up and said, "Hey, you know, the voters are the citizens of the city." The citizens, the same people that keep coming up, Jerry's husband, et cetera, coming up saying the same thing, doesn't mean that it's so. The reality is, if you look back historically, that we were turning meeting minutes into a job that was almost half of a time of somebody's time. To a point, we've actually lost a city clerk over this. So, I mean, this was a serious thing. If you think it's just something that we're just cooking up and, "God, it just sounds good, I like messing with Jerry, so I'm just gonna keep doing this." This has to do with, we, we had turnover, and this is how we drive turnover into city staff. What we do is we pass ordinances, and they don't get implemented, and then one of us up here needles that person, and so they never implement it, and then they get frustrated because they feel like they can't keep anybody happy, and they decide to leave the city. So to me, this is really serious. Um, it's something that I think, meeting minute format-wise, I, you know, honestly, I can't believe that we've taken as much time as we have on this item. Um, and, you know, a message to staff, if you guys have problems and you come to us and you ask us to help you, and we try to do that in a policy, remember, we don't run the day-to-day, Greg does, so we try to pass ordinances to help you guys do your job, and, and you don't run with it, there's nothing else we can do, because that's, that's all we can do up here, is set a policy and place a move. So I just want to make sure this policy is characterized the right way. The ordinance passed two years ago. Depending on which way it goes at this point, you know, it'll go the way it goes, but, uh, the other part is, um, you know, going through and having a direct discussion with an employee that's ours. Like Dean said, um, you know, the city clerk works directly for us. This is the time to have a direct discussion with, especially if it has to do with a policy. And we have had private discussions behind the scenes, so with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Councilmember, I mean Mayor Protem.
Just a point of clarification. Um, the statement that Mr. Edgar just made with regards to our past city clerk, I've spoken with her personally, because that accusation was made prior to her leaving, and she assured me it had nothing to do with that, that that's part of the job, and that really there were other issues, personal and at the workplace, that led to her leaving. Um, so I think that's a mischaracterization, and I think it's unfair because it's trying to lead you to believe something that's true that's not, and that that's, I'm applying pressure to our staff and, and I'm always very respectful to them, so I think that that's a unfair statement. Uh, the person who was just hired, Greg, is that a full-time person for Wendy?
No.
Part-time?
Right.
Okay, part-time.
She has, uh, previous municipal experience, so that's-
Great, great. And, uh, and so on the chart that we have on page five, Wendy, this is, uh, the chart that you provided us with, and it says, "Lagoon and Niguel, detailed summary, three hours, one full-time person." And then for us, it says, "Summary minutes, uh, two to three hours, one full-time person." You and I have talked about the extent of the detail in it, and I think that there's a happy medium. Uh, but now that you have this person part-time, which is what you expressed to me, that when our prior city clerk, who had been here for many years, Susan Vanderpool, she had you as a full-time support, so it was very different. Glad to hear that you have support, because I think in the city clerk's office, you need that. But I think that only increases my argument here that we have the staff, we have the, um, ability to do so. Uh, Laguna Niguel does it with one full-time person, so maybe we could reach out to them and see if there's something they're doing different, or if their summary minutes are somehow, um, packed with information, but in a small amount of, uh, time for the work that goes into it. I, I just think that it shows here on this that we absolutely could do summary minutes. You've already said it's not extremely labor-intensive, it's just really what the council is hoping to get. You have part-time work, and, um, and we can discuss the level of summary as opposed to what we're getting now. Maybe we want a little more, a little less, don't want to overwhelm you. But one thing that I do want to say, that the meeting minutes are to give you a full picture of what happened, okay? And let's just say, for example, and I know this may be the extreme, but let's just say, um, somehow the discs from the prior council meetings are lost, and all we have is these bullet points to give us our information. I just don't think it's enough. There's nothing personal, I, I like Wendy, I deal with her all the time. Um, I just have had the experience in the past to have something that was a better tool, not only for myself, or as Mr. Edgar said, my husband, who, you know, obviously supports me, but there were many other people in the community that got up and said that they would like to see these minutes go back to summary minutes. So I would say full picture, uh, official record, we have an extra help for Wendy. She says it's not labor-intensive, that it's possible to be done. And one of the things that I thought that Richard said, and it's something I brought up in the past, maybe we get the meeting minutes a little bit before you're going to make them official, give us an opportunity to weigh in, because we can only change what we have to say, not what the other council members say. Their content belongs to them. Uh, I think that would give us an opportunity to address any concerns, we move forward, and then the meeting minutes are never pulled again. So there are simple things that we could do, uh, ordinance that we could put in place to make sure that this isn't an argument for us going forward, but yet everybody gets what they need. And I'll go ahead and, and get, pass it on to you. I'm sorry.
Can I just, uh, maybe comment, uh, Mike?
Use the microphone, please.
Mayor.
It's my understanding that Laguna Niguel's, uh, contract, pretty much of a contract
city, just, just to point out that they, they probably do not have the activity in their, in their city that, that we have. A lot of gated-guarded, um, communities, but I just want to make that point.
Yeah, and in addition, I'm glad you said that, because now we're down to one meeting a month, so that should cut that in half. I know we have special meetings, but many of them have been closed sessions, so there's not a lot to, um, prepare. I just think that it's the perfect scenario for us to be able to do this. One less meeting a month, extra help, and a city clerk who's more than efficient and capable of doing this. She's done it with our past city clerk, and I believe she has the knowledge and capability to do that. And that, and that's all, Mayor.
Okay.
Can I clarify what the substitute motion is at this particular point? Because we seem to be going back and, and spending another twenty minutes with everybody going through this, and, and this is the intent. If we go with the program from Granicus, uh, what would you estimate the implementation time being, having talked to them?
Um, Granicus didn't actually give me an implementation time. I guess within four to six weeks that we need to work with our IT department and-
So, so the substitute motion then is to have the staff look at the Granicus application to bring it back to us, and in the interim, do summary minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm clear.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Murphy, questions?
Yeah, when I read this item, the one thing that did strike me as irrefutable fact is the first sentence of the summary. It says, "On August 2nd, 2010, the city council adopted Resolution 2010-16, which established the policy of the action-minute format." How many other policies, how many other ordinances have the city council passed that are being completely ignored? That was, to me, the big issue here. Not even the amount of time spent on the minutes, which is absolutely extraordinary in my mind, but the overall question of, are we supposed to now go through every resolution and find out if it's being followed? I'm going to assume it's being followed, and I want to assume it's being followed, but in this case, it's obviously not being followed. How many other issues are there like this that don't get reviewed because there's not the constant pressure for it? That, that, to me, is the overall question here. Very troubling to me that, that we're, that the action-minute format has not been followed in the time that it was the law of Los Alamos. That does not preclude us from going in any other direction today, okay? But it's, it's a serious item that, that we did not follow this resolution for almost three years. It's, it's, uh, it's not good. I would like to see this Granicus be fleshed out a little bit. I, I think it, it could be the answer. I can live with either summary or the, the minutes we have now are fine with me. If we need a little more summary minutes, that's fine too. I do find that there are several times in the minutes where only one comment is, is picked up, and it, it actually says in here somewhere that it is, uh, "Summary minutes rely on interpretation by the transcriber to determine what is being said and what portions of the dialogue are important." That leads me to believe that the way we're transparent is we get this up on a website, somehow, that people can come see exactly what was said, and they're not relying on somebody's interpretation of what was said, okay? I'm never going to be on a technical committee, I'll state that right up front, but I would like to see how either Granicus or, or even YouTube, something is there that, that this record is, is available. I'd also like to include the discussion of Granicus being able to, uh, put the committees, the commissions up on a tape basis, not live, but on a tape basis, where people can go to those and, and see what's happening there. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for my comments on the, um, substitute motion and some of the other comments that were going on, so, um, I, I do favor the, um, summary minutes because it is a historical archive that is written down. I think the, uh, the video, uh, record is too cumbersome for the average person to go, even the above-average that might want to go research some of these items. It does take, uh, real-time hours of looking at a three-year, four-hour meeting, and I think the, um, summary minutes, um, would be the, the best solution for our city. Now, with these other products, the Granicus product, um, I would be interested to see what the cost is, but, um, in, in my experience, um, technology changes far too rapidly, um, so we'll have training costs, we'll have, uh, licensing costs, which they call software license, uh, maintenance agreements, and those cost us every year. So I think we'd have to really be, um, sure that the product we get and the price we pay as a city is bringing the value to the, uh, the, the people and the council, so I'm, I'm not quite sure on that one, I'll have to wait and see what that is, but I think, um, a, uh, a, a Word document, a PDF document put into our, um, files accessible by the public is, um, I don't believe that's too cumbersome to get. I don't think we have, uh, very, very complex issues. Um, now, however, on the, uh, on the topic of following the law, following the code, I know far better than probably all five of us up here, I know far better what it is like not to be, to be accused of not following the law. I have been prosecuted, I have been, uh, sought after by what, uh, the council majority prior. There is a nine-page, uh, page of paper out there that, uh, lists all the laws that I broke, and, uh, if we're gonna follow the law, then prosecute me on that one. And I think that that's, if that's where the, where the council is, I think we gotta look at that. So this, this thought about not following the municipal code, I think, very disingenuous, and I'm just kind of a little tired of us bringing this up. I, I brought this up last year in regards to the trash contract. We, we asked the city attorney to look at the prosecution of not following law, and we deliberately not, uh, and we deliberately chose not to do that. So this whole thing about this line of questioning is really just, um, you know, just really starting to irritate me.[1791.94]
And I'd like it noted for the record, then, the reason why I didn't vote for this is I'm not going to reinforce the insubordination of following our city ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, passes four to one. Okay, with that, the next item is Item B, 9B. May we have a vehicle equipment replacement policy? May we have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. To formalize the replacement of our vehicles and equipment, staff has developed the policy that's in your report this evening. The staff has conducted research to determine the best practical policy that would serve Los Alamos. We've looked at local agencies and looked at their policies. By utilizing that information along with the city's historic usage, staff was able to develop a policy that incorporates the needs of all departments. As you know, many of our departments use our vehicles, not just the Public Works Department, who manages the fleet services, but we have recreation and police and even code enforcement that uses these vehicles. The policy identifies timely budgeting procedures, a replacement schedule based upon mileage and age, and a spreadsheet for determining internal charge rates. It also has the flexibility for extending the uses of vehicles, reassigning vehicles to other departments that aren't fully damaged, I guess is the word, and the options for purchasing vehicles or equipment at auction. There's no fiscal impact at this time. This is just the policy. We're not purchasing anything yet. If approved, this policy will be used to develop the city's future budget, which will be coming to you in the next future months. Staff would like to get the input of city council on this document, and if council agrees with the this document, we would recommend approval of the attached resolution for this policy.
Thank you. Questions back here to the council?
If I may.
Please.
I thought this was a great report, Tony. Good job. I like the idea of transferring to different departments that may not be as hard on the car, so we get more wear out of them, obviously based on repair factors as to whether or not we need to replace them. I mean, it's all very logical. The one thing I did have a problem with is on page five, maybe you can explain to me, at the top of the page, there's three bullet points. Sale or transfer to nonprofit entities. Can you give me a little bit of background on that?
Sure. And Madam, Mr. Mayor and Madam pro temp mayor, in the, which policy? In the surplus policy, when surplusing equipment, we, you guys have the right to either send them to auction, transfer the sale to a nonprofit or to a other public entity, say like one of our nonprofits in the city, or even to the joint forces training base, as long as it's another governmental entity. So I didn't want to leave that out of the policy. I wanted to incorporate everything that is, so it's fully inclusive.
It says sale or transfer to nonprofit. So are you saying we can sell it, and then the money goes to the nonprofit? We transfer the money?
No, we can, we can sell it to another agency for market value, but it has to be either another governmental agency or a nonprofit agency.
Well, I'll just go on the record that I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that because we get into a slippery slope when you talk about, there are so many different nonprofits in the community, and if there's a perception that we're giving one nonprofit favoritism when it comes to this item, it just makes me a little uncomfortable. So other than that, great staff report. I know you've been working on it for a while. Thank you, and I'll go ahead and pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Please.
So this policy within our budget, which we're going to be looking at here in about a month and a half, we have the garage fund, correct?
Yes.
So what this is attempting to do is to set up a policy to help manage the garage fund as far as the depreciation schedule and the amount of vehicles and, you know, their life, so that you can plan for the budget that would go into that?
That is correct.
In the past, we've had problems with, there's two components of the garage fund. There's the component that we try for replacement, and there's the component for operations.
Correct.
So this appears that it's on the replacement side.
Correct.
So just a question, if I was to apply this policy ordinance to our budget for the garage fund today, do you know what the impact would be on that garage fund?
No, but we can, we can get that information for you during the budget process.
Yeah, you know, I think this is a great first step. I would just like to see the financial impact of approving a policy. The garage fund has traditionally and historically been a significant challenge for this, for councils back to 2000. We've used it to earmark money and move stuff in and out of there, the collective we, the councils of us in the past. This is a great first step. I just would really, I'd be very supportive of this if I could see the financial impact to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No. I do. I know back when I was on council in 2006, I asked the question at that time, what do we have in our fleet? And I never really could get an answer. And I know you've identified part of it here on Exhibit A, on page six of six, but it would help to know what we do have. And I know Councilman Edgar talked about the issues with the garage fund, and frankly, I think we tend to use that fund in an inappropriate manner, where a need comes up and the money's sitting there, and we raid that money to use for other purposes. And part of creating that fund is to put money in to be able to do the replacements when the time comes. And if we continue to raid the fund, then we're faced with the same issue that I think Councilman Edgar was talking about, and that is, now we need it, but we don't have it. And so I would like to see us, at the budget session probably, make sure that that fund, as it's built, on a retained maintenance basis. We're putting away money from the police department to replace a police car, as an example, that that money be earmarked in a way to where we cannot raid that money, unless it's an emergency-type situation. That's the purpose, is my understanding, is the purpose of the fund was so that it was there when needed. And I think when we get to that point, that's what I would like to see as well. I agree with Councilman Edgar, I think it's a good first step, but I think we need, I'd like to have an actual listing of what we do have fleet-wise, inventory-wise, and who is assigned, who it is assigned to, so that we can make better decisions when it comes up for replacements. I know we just bought two more trucks here recently, and they're alternative fuel vehicles, I think. And so as we're going down that line, I'd like to know exactly what we're looking at in terms of how they're being replaced in the purpose. So thank you.
Okay, any questions, Mur? Okay, so I guess on the question, I do understand where Councilmember Edgar's coming from in terms of what is the real cost behind this. So city manager, if I may, Josh, how, what, how long you take, how long do you think it will take to develop an estimate of the cost associated with this policy?
We could probably do that in a week or two, and we could have it ready for the first budget session, if that would work for you guys.
Okay.
Or sooner.
Okay. And then, just as far as policy goes, this doesn't, I mean, ultimately, I think even on the case of donating or selling to a nonprofit, it'll still come back to us for a vote. I believe that's just going to happen, so we'll have a chance to weigh in, and I'll discuss on that. Okay, just wanted to confirm on that. Okay, with that, any other questions for the staff?
If they're going to take it back, can you link this directly to the garage fund by policy or ordinance numbers, so that you can actually see it's connected? I didn't see that in here either. The specific account within the budget.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, I'll open up to public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak?
Good evening, Council. Javier Mejia, just a thought on the discussion item. Would it be possible if those vehicles, instead of donating them to a local nonprofit, if you were to list them on your website, available to the local nonprofits, maybe to them as an auction item, and then the city could actually get the highest bang for their buck on those vehicles? And if it doesn't sell, then send it out to the normal auction. That way, there's no appearance of favors being done or favoritism towards any local nonprofit. It's open to anybody who might be in need of such type of vehicle or that could get usage out of it. Just an idea I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, go ahead and close it and bring it back to us. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Mur?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Murphy.
Okay, can I get a clarification? Are we approving this without seeing the financials in? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
There's a motion.
Yeah.
So we'll open the discussion, Troy, so if you want to go first.
Well, I just, I can approve something. I mean, to me, this, this section of the garage fund is one of the most volatile. Whatever decision we make, there, it'll have significant implications. Right now, we're looking at a thing coming up on the agenda where we're going to talk about throwing some more unfunded things in front of us to potentially vote on. We're looking at Granicus, that wasn't in the budget. So I, you know, before we start going in full drive financially, I really would, you know, I would appreciate if the council would at least consider, they can have it done in two weeks for the workshop, you know, at least we can see the implication of the policy we're about ready to approve on one of the biggest line items that we have in the budget. So with that, I can't support it the way it is if we're going to do that.
Thank you, Troy.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
A question, a clarification, please. Even though Exhibit A talks about a sale or transfer to a nonprofit entity, does, anywhere on the resolution say anything about that?
Well, the resolution attaches a policy as an exhibit, and I think that the exhibit is, in essence, incorporated by reference within the resolution, that that would be the intent. My understanding, maybe I misunderstood, but I think the reason that that was included in this policy is because that's already, I'm looking over there, that's kind of already part of a city's policy generally with regarding to disposing of surplus equipment, and the intent was to make sure that this, that's specific to vehicles, wasn't inconsistent with the existing general city policy in that regard.
Is that your question?
It is a question. It just, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Let me ask, let me ask the staff this kind of question. So in the category of nonprofits, I'm thinking like, say, if we had a fire department and we had a fire truck that had served out its 30 or 40 or 50 years, and we wanted to dispose of it, that the policy's in place that we can give that to a, maybe a, a community that needs a fire truck that is unable to afford their own, and that's, I think, how we dispose of it in a nonprofit way. That's kind of, I think, the intent, right? Not, not the charity down the street.
The intent is to provide options for council when we do bring the disposal of equipment to you, that you, we don't automatically throw, throw out a suggestion that a nonprofit might want it. Anytime we do have the disposal of equipment, it comes to you in a staff report. Traditionally, what we do now is to take it to auction, but it does provide an option. It just doesn't close the door early on.
Like in the early report, there's an HP LaserJet 5S with $10, and that's being generous.
Correct.
So we could have offered it perhaps in that policy. Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with it in general. I mean, I'd prefer it wasn't in there.
I agree.
It just, there's too much chance for favoritism there.
Understand. Okay. Any other discussion? So I think in terms of my, my understanding, I'm with Councilmember Edgar on this one. I think a little bit more information, I think, would be better in this in terms of what is this cost that's going to be that we're going to have to fit into our budget to, to fund this policy. I'm not against the policy, but I think we just need that other piece of information, so I'll just leave it at that.
Did you second my motion?
Yeah. We have a motion by Councilmember Gross, second by Councilmember Murphy, to accept the, okay. So call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say no.
No.
No. Okay, so we have three to two passes.
And I would hope, Councilman Edgar, that staff understands what we're talking about as they bring it forward in the budget aspect.
I'd like to offer that we take a five-minute recess. Okay? Do that. [Crosstalk][1455.32]
I mean, I'd prefer it wasn't in there.
I agree.
It just, there's too much chance for favoritism there.
Understand. Okay. Any other discussion? So I think, in terms of my understanding, I'm with Councilmember Edgar on this one. I think a little bit more information, I think, would be better in this in terms of what is this cost that's going to be that we're going to have to fit into our budget to fund this policy? I'm not against the policy, but I think we just need that other piece of information. So I'll just leave it at that. So.
Did you second my motion?
Yeah. We have a motion by Councilmember Gross, second by Councilmember Murphy to accept the... So call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say no.
No.
No. Okay, so we have three to two passes.
And I would hope, Councilman Edgar, that staff understands what we're talking about as they bring it forward in the budget aspect.
I'd like to offer that we take a five-minute recess. Okay? Do that.
Back to order, and before we go on to item 9C, I think City Manager, you can just do a quick announcement.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, earlier this evening, you approved the hiring of a new law firm, and I feel very fortunate to be interim City Manager and looking forward to working with this firm. I was in a neighboring community and was at some meetings at times and saw Mr. Reesman work, and it gave me an opportunity that once you decided to hire him to reorientate, reacquaint myself with some of my former colleagues that have worked with him, and I did get some further recommendations, and they were outstanding. I also feel equally privileged to, once again, be reunited with one of my favorite attorneys, Steve Skolnick, who I've worked with in the past. But tonight, you hired the firm of Wallencrest, Reesman, and Cranets, and here in the audience tonight is a very good city attorney. We're all going to be happy to work with Mr. Kerry Reesman.
Thank you. Thanks. Oh, you want to say something? Oh. Please.
Why be the only one who has it?
When does, when did an attorney ever not have something to say? I very much look forward to working with you all and staff and the community. I've gotten to know the community a little bit in the past several months, and I think it's a great community. I participated in your wonderful race on the base and enjoyed it. It's one, was one of the best-run races that I've been involved with, and I was very impressed with that. So, here I am. I can't wait to get to work. In fact, I'm going to come down tomorrow and attend the staff meeting and meet a lot of the staff members who I haven't met yet, and ready to jump in and do what I can to make Los Alamos an even better place. Not sure whether to call it Los Alamos or Los Alamos, but I'll probably switch between the two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And before we go on to the next item, I do want to extend an appreciation and thanks to our interim city attorney, Stephen Skolnick, who came in, got up to speed, hit the ground running, and did you want to say anything, Steve?
Just say thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to work with all of you and get to know all of you, and as you know, I came in with the understanding that I would be a short timer, and I'm glad that you've made the selection that you have. I've known Kerry and members of his firm for probably close to 30 years, and he and they are first-rate people, and they'll do a fine job for you, and I know that the staff have enjoyed my style, and I think that their style is about as close to my style as that of anyone I know, and I think it'll be a really good fit for all of you, and I wish all of you good luck in all of the future endeavors of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, item 9C, which is the Business Watch Program, and could we have the staff report, please?
Mayor Kuzamoto, members of the City Council, earlier this year, Mayor Protem Mejia arranged a meeting with myself and Support Services Manager Cassandra Palmer, representing the Police Department, and a couple of business owners. And at that meeting, the business owners expressed a concern for criminal activity that had been occurring. Specifically, they spoke about some nighttime crime involving thefts from their vehicles as well as burglaries, and they wanted to do something about it. So they were starting a volunteer patrol where they would go out and patrol the city, was the idea, and what they, what their plan was is they would, by patrolling the city, they would be providing an extra set of ears and eyes, and they would report suspicious activity to the Police Department. And they inquired from us how they could best work with the Police Department and what type of support from the Police Department they could receive. We discussed how our support could range from something very grand, a comprehensive police business watch program, in which the, in which our staff would be involved in recruiting, training, and managing volunteers, holding frequent meetings, providing vehicle communications equipments and uniforms, to something much more modest, in which the Police Department would designate a liaison that would facilitate communication with this group and receive information about when they were doing their patrols, exchanging information, sharing with them recent criminal activity and crime trends, that sort of thing. The group that we met with understood that the more comprehensive model would require additional staffing and budgeting, and at this time, they're requesting the more modest model. In order to promote awareness of this group's efforts and to serve as a crime deterrent, we spoke about the possibility of putting signs up citywide to promote this business watch, and, you know, we were talking about, you know, having customized signs made to put around the city that would have the Police Department's contact information. An estimate of these signs is about $150 per sign, and we feel that 50 signs would be sufficient, and if this meets with the City Council's approval, we're recommending the appropriation of $10,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of 50 signs as well as a number of poles in case we identify locations where we can't put these signs on existing poles right now. You have before you a sample that's just an idea of what these signs could look like, and based on the council's wishes, the number of signs that we could put out could be scaled up or down from the 50 that we're talking about. That's my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, opening up for questions in the council? Anybody want to start? I'll go ahead and start. So Chief, on this one, to your knowledge, have other communities done something like this, similar?
I'm not aware of any communities that are doing, I do know of communities that have volunteer programs.
Okay.
Where it's, it involves more staff involvement.
Okay. So this is kind of new, so you haven't seen this before?
I haven't seen this before, but I, but I can't say that other communities aren't doing this.
So I was wondering the effectiveness of this, so we don't have an idea of how effective. I mean, Neighborhood Watch, if one were to compare this to a Neighborhood Watch, there's the eyes and ears of the community are out there and would know what to do, report, so this is similar, right?
It is, and that's, and that's why we would call it a business watch.
Yeah, okay. Okay. No other questions right now?
If I can. I had, the end of last year, I had a couple of different businessmen who had reached out to me, as Todd's in the staff report, and I don't want to reiterate, but they did ask for our help. We said that we were not looking to have really any support from the city, in essence, but more just a relationship, so that when we went out on these watches, which we've done, you know, different times, they're a little bit more active up here along La Salle Boulevard, but we're trying to build our numbers. That's one of the reasons why this, as you said, this will get the word out, and for people who want to be involved, they can. We're trying to work with the Chamber to get a list of businesses, to reach out to those, to minimize the impact of us trying to go door-to-door to everyone. I did tell them that I thought this would be a minimal amount, as opposed to maybe somebody like, I think it was Seal Beach has cars and uniforms, and, I mean, it's a great deal of money. This is really just something to help the initial group get the word out, let people know that there is a business watch, and that we can then unify together and work as a second set of eyes and ears for the Police Department. No interaction when anything going on. We're really strictly just to report any strange behavior. And I think that this is, this is a small amount to ask for the building of this program, and not only that, but to let people know that there is a business watch out there, and if they're going to come into our neighborhoods, there's a potential that they may stand, run the risk of getting caught because we do have these extra people in place. So I would just ask the council that if you could support this, it would be the beginning of the building and the increasing the numbers of the group to do the patrols, and I don't think $10,000 is a lot of money, but as the chief said, if we want to reduce it to a lesser amount, that's fine, but you've got to think about the number of business parks that are out there, and, and these are, these are crimes that are anywhere from stealing copper parts off of the cars, catalytic converters, to rims and wheels, to batteries. I mean, these poor people are having to put chains around their wheels to keep them from being stolen. They're having to put special apparatuses on their batteries because they're so regularly being taken, and it's impacting their ability to do what they do for a living. And so I think that was what started them reaching out to us as a council. And not to say that the Police Department isn't doing a great job, they are, it's just, you know, we only have a couple of police officers on at any certain time, and this is just a benefit on top of that.
Okay. No other questions, so I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Any members seeing none, go ahead and close public comments. So back to us, is there a?
I have a question.
There is a question, okay.
Chief, can you identify the types of businesses, the comment was made that they've reached out to the Chamber, and I'm not aware of that. I do get the minutes and stuff from the Chamber meetings, and I know that there's, we get the weekly summary of incidents from you. Is this just one particular area, is this in the industrial areas, is this personal cars, trucks? What, what is this involved?
You mean, what do the, the gentleman that we met with, what was their concern, or what?
Yeah.
One of them had been victimized, spoke of having vehicles, his, his commercial vehicles that were parked at night, thefts from vehicles, batteries from vehicles. Another gentleman has an antique shop. I don't think he had been a victim, but he was concerned about burglaries. Those were the incidents that I recall.
Do we have a formalized Neighborhood Watch program in the city?
We do not have an active Neighborhood Watch program at this time.
I know investing in signs to put up can be a costly thing, and I've seen signs that you guys have done for shoplifting that are posted in some stores that have problems like that, and I know Neighborhood Watches, they typically go on a, like a decal that goes on an interior window so they can be seen from a residence area, and I would like to see us explore either printing these on, on a heavy stock paper that could be put in windows around and see if that has the effect before we invest $8,000 in, in metal signs in that particular process. The sample that you've indicated here is from something called the National Neighborhood Watch Institute out of Santa Fe Springs. We might be able to get some additional information there. And I guess my question is, is this something, again, without identifying who the two or three people were that brought this to you, whether this is focused in a particular area like the industrial area up on the east end where enhanced patrols might help, or is it a lighting issue around the building? I know in the business park that I'm in, we pretty much mandate that they maintain lighting that's photocell activated for the night, and I know a number of the businesses in that park have put up video cameras because of the types of things that are being stolen. And I'm sympathetic to the problems that happen. I, I'm just not sure that this type of an investment is going to totally address that, number one, and number two, I think it should be a program that, that we should work on, if necessary, more citywide than just several people that have been victimized in that particular process. I think it's a good program. I just would like to see a more, a broader base that affects the entire city, and it may give us the opportunity also just to implement some of the Neighborhood Watch-type programs. I know the Neighbor for Neighbor program that they do through CERT tries to do that in a similar fashion, but I'd like to, I'd like the consistency, basically, between the residential and the business, and the proportion from the standpoint of incident reports we get, business versus residential.
Okay.
Would it be possible to? Did you recognize me there?
Yes.
Okay, you started to. Would it be possible to ask the businesses to buy or sponsor a sign and put a small ad at the bottom?
I don't, I'm not going to ask them to do that because I think putting their, their name at the bottom of the sign, to some degree, it makes it sound funny, but it's kind of like a target, as far as I'm concerned. And, and just so you know, well, Richard, that's, that's the answer. I mean, if that's the way you want to go, we can actually put that out there. I just don't think they're going to want to, want to have their name on the bottom of the sign.
Okay. It seems like it would be actually a very good statement, "I'm for law enforcement." I think would, in, you know, would get a lot of goodwill among your neighbors and seeing that, hey, this guy's actually putting up his own money for our, for our protection.
Okay, so it is back to us, and I think this is the time we call for a motion, and maybe we can have some more discussion on this. So is there? Yes.
I'm sorry, Warren, I didn't get a chance.
So is, yeah, is, can we call for a motion, and then maybe we can have the discussion? So is there a motion for this staff report?
I'll make a motion to go with the recommended action.
Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that, so we have the discussion. Okay, so we have motion and a second to purchase 50 signs at $150 per, and Troy, you want to say something?
Yeah, a couple of things. So, Todd, from your perspective, we don't have a crime problem, just so that it's clear. We have two businesses that have had a personal discussion with you, and so just, but you have expert knowledge of our city. Do you, prevention-wise, I mean, there's a crime problem, and then there's crime prevention, and then there's the priorities. Again, budget's coming up in a month and a half, $10,000 from an unassigned account. I want to, I want to support this. I also called the Chamber today and met with John A. just to see what they, you know, would they get on board? Maybe they help out with this and find out, because the Chamber has 232 members, our businesses versus two, and so I would be interested to hear the, you know, the Chambers take if they could facilitate a discussion within, so we can get a little bit more substance on, maybe to Dean's point, and Jerry's, which is what are the types of problems we have? You know, the signs being placed right now, I guess we place them where there's been crime, but we don't know where people that own businesses in that community are the most concerned, and, you know, they're probably praying there was no crime there. So I guess from your perspective, crime increase is not the issue here, it's prevention, correct?
Well, the, the people that we spoke to are concerned about an increase of crime, and I don't know that I would want to go on record and say we don't have a crime problem. You know, we, we do have some crime occurring, and, and, you know, I want to say that any crime, criminal activity occurring in the city is a problem for us, but the, the folks that we met with are absolutely concerned about recent criminal activity.
So Todd, two meetings ago, we gave the Police Department $90,000 we didn't have, and we've got a bunch of priorities coming up. We are looking at a potential schedule change on the way that we're going to factor police cars and their useful life on something we just voted on, potentially it's going to put pressure on and actually shorten the depreciated life of police cars. Are you concerned bringing this thing now before we actually get into the budget so we can rack and stack everything and take a look at it? Because I want to be supportive of this. If, if there is a problem, and you feel strongly, and Jerry's identified it, I want to make sure it's effective. I also would like to see it be coordinated through our business mechanism, which is the Chamber or any other group that would bring this forward, and just timing-wise, it seems a little odd that come in, you know, a month before the budget, when we already know, we still don't know 100 percent where we're going to get some of the money for our budget cycle coming up here. Is it something urgent-wise that you, you feel we got to, is that why you put it on, or is there?
No.
Was that my request?
This, this is absolutely, you know, I, I'm looking for the council's direction.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Are you done, Troy?
Yeah, I'm done.
One of the gentlemen that attended did reach out to John Osborne, thinking that he was still involved with the Chamber, and John recommended him to Johnny Strohmeyer, which I just got that information today, and so I'm happy to reach out to her. As far as the two people who came to the meeting, of course, I'm not going to bring everybody who wants to be involved. These are the two gentlemen who reached out to me, said they've talked to several businesses. There are along La Salle Boulevard, there are at least four businesses right now that are doing patrols, and they're trying to get more people to be involved, so it's not cumbersome on just the few of them that do them. They actually are the ones who asked for our support for the signs. They thought it might help grow their numbers easier, but also act as a deterrent. So as far as, are we in the early stages? Yes, absolutely. Are we looking for help from the council to be able to get the word out in a, in a manner that does two things? It helps grow the numbers of the business watch, and it also acts as a deterrent, hopefully, for the people who might come into our community and perpetrate these crimes. The businesses over, and this is over a period of time, so it's not a reflection on the Police Department, they're breaking in through the roofs on these buildings over here and going down into the, the businesses and stealing. They've broken into those businesses through the roof and tried to drill through the wall to the jewelry store. There are several businesses that have said, absolutely, we're sustaining the same kinds of thefts, we, we need the help. I mean, the fact, to the council, that people are having to chain their, their wheels, and they're having to come up with special locks for their batteries, and I'm not just saying this is localized, these are the people who so far have engaged. I'm asking for a minimal amount, and if you want to cut it in half and get started, and we start off with $5,000, I'm good with that. I'm just saying, let's support the businesses. Dean, it's not one or two people, it's a group of people, and it's growing. This will just be a tool for us to use to be able to really move a lot quicker and, and get more people involved. So if you can't find your way to it, then I'd like for you to tell those people that you don't think it's a concern big enough to get a couple of signs and put them up around the community, and that we're going to give them this to put in their window, because I don't think that's going to be a deterrent, and I don't think that people who are driving by would see those from the street anyways.
Okay.
And then I'll just call for the question, because I don't want to, I don't want to beat this. This is just something that, you know, the businesses have asked me to bring forward, and there's no agenda for me, there's no benefit for me. Actually, I've had to go on these, these little drives during the evening into the early morning hours in support of these people to help them until they can get their numbers increased, so I've done what I can.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to buy up to 50 of the signs at a total cost of $10,000. Call for question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So we have three to two, failed, okay.
And could I just go back? I would like a better report or a more in-depth report. The signs are not as much of a concern to me as the idea that we have groups out doing patrol work when there are agencies that could be hired that do commercial patrols, and I would be more concerned with the issue of somebody getting injured or something happening with these people feeling like they're empowered to go around and do something like that, and we're, in essence, somewhat condoning that. I think back to the idea that you've got somebody out there, probably not these people, but if we get it started, you could have somebody out there confront somebody at a, at a location and potentially wind up being injured or getting deeper involved than, than they need to. To me, that's a policing responsibility, and if we have that kind of an issue, then I think that's something that the Police Department needs to identify and work on. I know when there's, when we had the incident with the senior citizen that was attacked in the Mobile Home Park, additional resources were put on in order to try and capture that particular person. I'm just, I'm just cautious from the standpoint that I think we're going down the wrong path to simply condone and say, yeah, it's okay, we're aware that you're out there patrolling, and they're till all hours of the night doing it. What happens when they spot somebody that's doing it, and they dial the 911, and it goes through? With the limited resources that all of our cities have on in the evening, I just don't want to see somebody hurt, and I can see that as being a potential. So I think a little bit more in-depth analysis of this coming back to us with a report. I'm not opposed to helping out the businesses in the process, and I think going through the Chamber is a good idea. I'm not sure that posting signs up on the poles is going to be the deterrent. It's, it's one thing that can work. As I said, my more greater concern is, is that we're, in essence, creating a, or condoning a patrol program that I don't think we really want to take that responsibility for. I've had discussions with the chief about the volunteers and policing program that Cypress and COB chooses, and there doesn't appear to be enough manpower to supervise that as well, and I think we could, we could benefit by those types of programs, whether it fits in La Salle or not, I don't know. But I'm in favor of working with the businesses and trying to get something, but I'm a little cautious about the idea of these guys driving around at night. They could be in a spot where the police don't know them and find themselves in that same type of a situation, and, and, you know, I'm just concerned.
If I can report right now, we did speak about that, and the fact that, you know, this group, with or without our endorsement.
Right.
Can, can, can do their patrols. We can't stop them. However, we did express that the, the having the liaison to communicate with them, so at least we know that they're out there when they're out there, what types of vehicles they might be driving, would be, you know, would be beneficial to us.
I agree.
And we also, I neglected to mention it in my, in my verbal report, but it is in the staff report, that we would want to get an opinion from the city attorney as to any type of liability that we would have for simply endorsing their program, even though we wouldn't have any direct involvement of managing their volunteers, because really, the way this would work is, it's, it's their program, they're, they are managing their own volunteers. We're just, you know, asking whether or not we should be giving them our, our stamp of approval or our endorsement, our support.
And I, I've known of situations in the past where stores have been broken into through the ceiling, and that happens, and you wind up with business owners sitting inside with a shotgun waiting for them to come through. I'm just concerned that we don't get to that particular case, and if we have those types of problems, then I think it's a situation, and I kind of agree with Councilman Edgar, we need to be looking at the budget then from the standpoint of the priorities and where we're spending our money, so.
Understood.
So if I may, with all due respect to Councilmember Gross, I think the endorsement, at least my perspective, I think by our vote of non, of not passing this, we're not endorsing anything, so this, the private citizens, business owners can do whatever they want. It's, you know, it probably does set up for a potentially unsafe situation, but I don't know how we can step in and do any kind of, you know, interfering with their rights and to do what they want to do to. But with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem, Mayor Mejia, want to have a?
Yeah, Todd was very clear with us when we sat down and met, that, you know, they could not give us their stamp of approval, per se, because they didn't want to put the city at risk. As a council member, I don't want us to be at risk either. These people are going to do these patrols because they feel like there's a necessity for them, and my, my recommendation to Todd was at least have someone that we can call and say, okay, these are the people who are going to be out on patrol. You may potentially get calls from them through the dispatch center so that those people are aware they're not just crazy people, they're actually part of this group, and to identify the vehicles and the license plates so that they aren't put in harm's way. It's been very clear with the people that I've spoken with, they don't want to have any contact with the people who are committing the crimes, they just are trying to help minimize the effects of what's happening in the community. So I'll get back to them and let them know that there was not enough support, and, and then they can go from there.
Okay. Thank you. And so with that, we'll go to the next item, which is item 9D, the consideration of League of Cities' proposed amendments to the bylaws. We have a staff report, please.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, the city of Los Alamos, along with approximately 488 other cities in the state of California, as a member, the League of California Cities has provided bylaws approved by the Board of Directors, and they've submitted two amendments to their membership for approval by a mail ballot, and these items have been placed on your agenda this evening for your consideration. At the February meeting, the League's Board approved submitting two amendments to the bylaws to the membership. Number one, that resolutions submitted to the League for presentation to the General Assembly must be concurred by at least five or more cities, or by city officials from at least five or more cities, number one. Number two, the League Board may take a position on a statewide ballot measure by a two-thirds vote of the directors that are present at that meeting. Currently, the Board may take a position with a simple majority vote, and be appropriate for City Council to discuss these amendments and provide direction to staff.
Okay, back to us. Any questions on this item of staff?
I called earlier and spoke with Gray.
Okay. Okay, no questions, let's go ahead and invite public.
I've got a question.
Okay.
How does this affect the, the conference that's coming up in Palm Springs, that we've appointed a delegate to? Does this mean that the delegates at their conferences are no longer going to be voting on these items?
Palm Springs?
That's Skag.
Skag.
Oh, that's Skag, okay.
My confusion. Right, right. The, the annual meeting of the League is generally in October, so plenty of time.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so opening up for public comment, any of the members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back here to the council. Is there a, well, is there a motion?
Yes.
A motion by Councilmember Murphy. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to second.
Okay, second. Back to us for discussion. Any further discussion on this item?
Yeah, I think that, Mayor, if I may, this is an attempt to limit input, and they're putting greater numbers in order to be able to, to bring forward resolutions and also take positions, and I think that we've seen that here on our own council, where we've tried to make it a, a supermajority, as opposed to just a majority, and, and I'm not in support of either one of these, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, let's bring it back here for a vote, then. All those in favor of the staff report?
If I may, the staff report, the motion is just to authorize the city manager to execute, can we clarify whether he's offering in support or opposition?
I think that the, yeah.
You're right.
I inferred that the intention was to support both of these, but I could have been wrong about it.
So the maker of the motion, let's see if we're in alignment, maker of the motion?
To, to approve this, yes.
In support of?
Yes.
Support of, okay, and my second is consistent with your motion, so, all right, clear? Okay, thanks, Wendy, Steve. So with that, we'll bring it back here for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's 4-1. Okay, thank you. All right, next is the mayor and council initiated business, is, does anyone want to go first?
I'll go first.
Thank you.
I've attended a subcommittee meeting for Vector Control with regards to setting the goals for the general manager of Vector, and we came up with a list of, I believe, six things that we would like him to focus on. Many of them were already on his list, so I think we're all on the same page, and it's very consistent.
Okay.
Oh, and, and Mayor, if we could close in memory of Tony John Frumaggio II. He was a longtime resident, his family, many of them were, brothers and sisters were raised here. They've now moved out to the Ladera Ranch area, most of them, but he has a, a great deal of family friends, Johnny Strohmeyer is one of them, and I would just like to ask that this longtime Los Alamos resident be remembered here by the council, and if we could send a disc to the family in commemoration, that would be appreciated.
Okay, so we'll do that. Anybody want to go next?
I'll go. Real quick, I want to congratulate the chief on two high-profile arrests, and I want to thank Steve, your gentleman, it was a pleasure to work with you. Thank you for stepping in here in our time of need. And to Brian Gorman, 44 years ago, I earned one of these hats, and I want to thank you for them, for the memories.
Oh, nice. Okay. Anybody want to go next?
I'll go ahead and go. I concur. Congratulations on the arrest, from the standpoint of this morning, for the bank robber that I think was either the fourth time or fifth time he's hit the local bank, and everything worked well, and caught him heading to the freeway and went off on him on a chase, and after a little scuffle and a taser and so on, I guess we got him down, and he's in custody, so that's a, that's a great thing from the standpoint of, of Los Allo, and, and stopping this guy who kept coming to the same bank over and over and over again. Meetings and events and activities that I've been to over the last month are posted on losal.net, and the community can get a copy of that on their own, and with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on.
Thank you. Troy, did you want to go?
Yeah. Thanks. Couple items. For the Sanitation District, we're focused right now on getting ready for union negotiations between now and June 30th. The Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Board was postponed for this month, and so Steve, between yourself or Dave Hunt, just really trying to get an idea of what's going on at Coyote Creek. I haven't been having an opportunity to advocate on our behalf, and I'm starting to feel a sense of loss of momentum in the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. There was a Senate bill that was put forth to try to consolidate all the conservancies up and down the state, and it would have consolidated Rivers and Mountains Conservancy with Santa Ana, or I'm sorry, Santa Monica, and I, I just want to make sure that we get deep enough in, we've got this project going. They're also looking for other funds, and, and again, these are Prop 84 bond funds, and it seems the perception from them looking at us is that we're taking a little bit of time, and I, I just wanted to know if you could just give us a quick status.
Sure, the, the quickest status is that it'll be going out to bid next week, it'll be on your May agenda
Perfect.
for you to approve, not just the bids and specs, but awarding the contract to the contractor.
Perfect, okay. I also attended the groundwater replenishment committee. We're focused on a $100 million construction project there. I wanted to thank the mayor, I think that Mayor Kuzmoto did an outstanding job with Congressman Lowenthal. He set up a meeting, he put together the agenda, he facilitated the council through all the items that we may want to take up there, and then he was very gracious in the meeting of letting a combination of him, myself, and staff go through things that were important. I think the mayor advocated very strongly against the Cypress project, but he took an attack that was much more diplomatic and really stuck to just the facts, and Mayor, I just wanted to tell you that, I thought that was a great job on your part.
Thank you.
I wanted to remind people in the community that Kenny Brandyberry is focused on Pizza Monday at Valentino's. It's a big fundraising event for Casa U Shelter. Usually, he tries to raise $10,000 to $20,000. Every pizza that you order is $10, and that $10 goes 100% to Casa U Shelter. He's over there every Monday through April, he picks April because it has five Mondays. So I would encourage businesses, the city, anybody that can go out there, go in at a minimum, go harass Kenny, he loves that, but at most, buy a bunch of pizzas from him. Steve, I wanted to thank you as our interim city attorney. It's been a pleasure getting to know you and to work with you as the Cypress thing got heated, and so we really appreciate all of your, your help. And Carrie, I wanted to, again, congratulate you publicly for being selected as our new city attorney. We're looking forward to working with you, and after the council meeting tonight, which had its ups and downs, I hope you're still excited, so, good. Let's see. Lastly, you know, the, the item that Jerry brought forward with the Business Watch program, I, I just want to make an open offer, Jerry, to you two, that I would assist you in any way in facilitating your involvement, briefing the, the chamber, and trying to take this thing forward. I think if we do have a crime problem, there is something that is going on behind the scenes, and having to do with the release of a lot of the folks, because they overcrowding in the jails, and, and we are seeing a little bit of an increase in crime, without getting specific, so I am interested in your program. I hope, I, I'd love to have an opportunity to work with you. Johnny even wanted to extend from the chamber, that she would love to have you possibly come even on the, once a month, they have a networking meeting, and you can pose this, and then use those inputs, and maybe try another time bringing it forward. I would be very supportive. With that, just wanted to thank you, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll just go ahead and close. Appreciate the kind words from Councilmember Edgar. I did not intend to be at the Lowenthal meeting, but it just scheduled the way it worked out, I was able to go, but I did miss another meeting, but so be it. And then, I thought it was a very good meeting, we had great participation. Councilmember Edgar brought his concern, which I think has at least been somewhat addressed, which is good, and I think the good part is, now that gives us time to keep it on the, the congressman's radar, and his local staff representative will be, be mindful of that. I do want to thank city manager for being there, as well as Stephen Mendoza, Community Services, well, no, Development Director. I thought those were really good things, that we were able to brag about the good things that we're doing in our community, and, you know, I think it was just a very informative meeting, a very, I'd say casual, it was actually kind of fun. I was very nervous going in there, but it was very, very fun, and I think we're going to do this again in a few months. We'll get back on the congressman's calendar, and I would encourage some of our other council members to go, and just, again, it's just that dialogue to say the things that we're doing. We also, Mayor Protem Graham, he and I had a chance to meet with Supervisor Morlock, and you saw it in the staff report, so I think it stands on its own, and it was a very nice discussion, and he had explained his limitations and lack of ability to help fund the SRO, but we did get to go and ask and have some quality time talking with him about issues in our community. So those are the two big things, and.
Can I halliby one more thing?
And with that, I will close mine, and Dean has one more shot.
I would like to ask the council to support me on requesting staff to come back with a policy that would allow us to terminate council business at meetings at 10 o'clock, meaning that if we're engaged in something at 10 o'clock, we'll finish that, and if there are things left on the agenda that haven't been covered, we either go to a second meeting, or bring it back up at the next meeting, but this way, we're not dragging on until 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. I think there was a plan at one point also, if we were going to do closed sessions, that they were going to be done at 5 o'clock. I wasn't on the council when that took place, but we can look back and see if that was there, but I would like to clarify, but I've had some, some concerns from people saying that the meetings just go far too long. Part of it has to do with the discussions that come up at the front end of the meeting, and we may need to look at that. I know a couple of cities do put a time limit on that, and I don't want to, I don't want to defer the amount of people being able to talk, but I think in respect for everybody's time, if we come up with something that says a 10 o'clock ending time, or at least we don't take up new business after 10 o'clock, so staff can come back if I have support.
So I guess if I can, if I can add on to that, I think I'd like to consider limiting us as well to a certain amount of time, so we're not going to be, I'll say, filibustering, so we have a chance to get our, you know, fair, equal, equal time.
As the chairman, you have that ability.
Okay, thank you. With that, closing, item 10, we'll go to
Yeah.
the next one, is it? City manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd just like to compliment Cory and Parks and Recreation for the Race on the Base reception tonight was very nice. I thought that it, very positive with the businesses and everybody involved with that, and I want to thank Troy for, for bringing up about the pizzas with Casa U Shelter. My, my daughter has just enlisted as a, a new volunteer with that program, so I'm going to have to talk to her that she needs to get us pizza.
Yeah. Do you want to say something about, Todd, the?
Well, I thought that had been covered, but I also would like to compliment the police department, Chief Mattern, and everyone with that, with the arrest today of Keith Smith, Sr., who, this was his fourth robbery of the bank with a knife, and it was an excellent piece of police work, and the chief and I were in my office when the sirens were going off, and it was very exciting.
Well, thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and go into closed session, so we'll adjourn us out here to go back to closed session, and we will come out, out here and close in memory, we'll report anything that's reportable, and we'll close in memory of Tony Frumaggio.
Gian Frumaggio.
Gian Frumaggio, okay, thank you.